Oh, wait a second.
Recording in progress.
Perfect. Hello, everybody. Welcome to our afternoon session for today's council meeting. It's Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. Go ahead and do a call the meeting to order and we'll pass it to Clementine to share, to do roll call and share with announcements with the public.
Councilmember Barber.
President.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on the agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees, please keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with this meeting. And thank you for participating in your city government.
Thank you, Clementine. And with that, we will go to presentations. The first item on our agenda is to recognize city employees for milestone anniversaries and retirements for the fourth quarter 2024. And this is probably one of the happiest celebratory moments that we do on the council. Because we get to recognize and appreciate all the work that our workforce does. So sending lots of love to all of you. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for a presentation.
Yes, thank you so much. Let's start with not so happy news. Louis Macuso, our park operation manager, will retire after 32 years of service. And I'm authorized to talk about it briefly, and that's all what he wants. So that's what what I do very in respect or out of respect for his wishes. A 20-year anniversary is with our communications manager and our city manager's office, Lori Huelga. She is also communicating somewhere else. But everyone knows Lori and she has been with the city for starting as a part-timer and then entered the full-time employment. What a lot of folks know that she's issuing media releases, she's sending out weekly emails during COVID. These were daily emails that actually became the lifeline for many residents who really counted on the city to be the most trusted information sharer. And Lori has has moved the needle with respect to our communications office quite a bit. One, one, one thing that you might not know is that for the longest time, our websites were actually built and maintained all by Lori. And just in the more most recent history of the city, we have used now a third party to help us with the websites. But Lori had been a very much self-taught, experienced webmaster and has done a great job also in creating the web presence that we all enjoy today. So congratulations to Lori for 20 years of service and I'll make sure to meet her in her office and give her the certificate. Lisa Linsal is in our financing office. Lisa also celebrates 20 years of service. I don't know, Rafella, if you want to say a few words about Lisa? Or I can do it. Also, Lisa has been with the city, starting out in administration and finance, working for the finance director for many, many years as their executive assistant. As we passed through a few different finance directors. But also Lisa started working in about, I think about 10, 12 years ago in the risk management area and has done a tremendous job there supporting the risk manager. Basically exploring all the different angles of claims that have been given to the city. She has progressed in her knowledge and just very recently Rafella has hired or promoted Lisa to purchasing analyst. So there is a brand new role for her in entry-level management. We are absolutely thrilled to see Lisa's progression here in the city and she's really a very reliable source for now 20 years. And again, if you have a chance to stop by finance, you see a great success story there. Alma Murphy is in the police record the part of our police administration. She is the police records and detention supervisor, but I know that Chief Hobo has a five-minute plus presentation prepared. And the moment when he asks himself questions is when he knows he has to stop talking. So with that, I hand it over to Chief Hobo, who will say a few words about Alma.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, council. Good afternoon. I actually want to recognize two people. I'm going to be in trouble for recognizing one. I want to start
I acknowledge.
With Karen Perro, who is retiring after 17 years. And so Karen's here today. She didn't want me to say anything, but I'm going to tell you that she is my right hand. Without her, I don't know how well my budget is going to be because she's always the one who says, no, chief, you can't do that. She's written every single agenda report that has come before you. She does every grant for us. And Karen, I really appreciate you and we're going to miss you. So thank you for your 17 and a half years of service. Rafella, just, just so you're aware. Yeah, I know you are. And with that, I would like to invite Alma to come up here with me. I know she probably doesn't want to do that, but come on up, Alma. I know, I know. I always got to throw something in there. So the Monterey Police Department takes great pride in recognizing police records and detention supervisor Alma Murphy, badge 761, on the occasion of her 20 years of service to the city of Monterey. Monterey Police Department Records and Detention Supervisor Alma Murphy has been an essential part of the Monterey Police Department for the past 20 years, from October of 2004 to present. PRDS Murphy started with the city of Monterey as a police services technician in October of 2004. In 2006, she was promoted to the supervisory role of a senior police services technician and has been integral to the training of the entire Monterey Police Department's Records and Jail Division ever since. From 2012 to 2017, PRDS Murphy worked as the department's evidence technician and she was responsible for processing all department evidence, including multiple homicide cases. In March of 2021, PRDS Murphy was promoted to her current position overseeing the department's Records and Jail Division, where she plays a crucial role in keeping the department running. PRDS Murphy was a lead supervisor in implementing the training and in training the department on our new records management system. PRDS Murphy's favorite role, however, is being a dog mom.
Auntie.
Auntie to Callahan, the Monterey Police Department mascot. PRDS Murphy is currently the president of the Monterey Police Employee Association. Since becoming president, she has constantly implemented new ideas to improve the workplace and raise morale throughout the department. The relationships PRDS Murphy has built with the community, department, staff and city staff in Monterey is invaluable. PRDS Murphy holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice management from Union Institute and University. PRDS Murphy has always led by example in exhibiting professionalism, service, integrity, hard work and commitment to the law enforcement profession. The city of Monterey Police Department thanks PRDS Alma Murphy for her dedication for the past 20 years. Thank you very much. Do you want to say?
No. Thanks very much.
And here's the 20 more.
Yes.
All right, Hans, back to you.
And the last one is our park maintenance worker, George Senico. George has been working for our parks division and all the Parks and Recreation Department for the last 25 years. He came to us from the Pebble Beach Company. We have, by the way, quite a lot of folks that that we have hired from the Pebble Beach Company. The aforementioned Louis Macuso also came to us 32 years ago from the Pebble Beach Company. George has been working all across the city. Most recently, you will see his maintenance efforts between the Coast Guard Pier, Coast Guard Pier and our aquarium. He also has done and designed his own landscaping project. One of them you also see that was done a few years back is at the Doc Ricketts statue in the intersection of Wave Street and Drake. He was also honored in 2015 with the Bell Buckle Award from the Public Plants and Public Works Department at that time. So again, congratulations, George, for 25 years in our Parks and Recreation Department. And he's not here. Absolutely. Come. Yes.
Thank you very much. I didn't realize that Hans had already prepared something, but I was told that I was going to be up here. So I thought I'd do a little preparation for you. So good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Williams and council members for recognizing my 25 years of service as park maintenance worker in the Parks Department. My family was not able to attend today. My younger daughter is currently in a gap year after graduating this spring from Columbia University in New York City. My oldest son, at 25 years old, recently graduated from a, with a master's degree from Santa Clara University and currently works for the university in the donor relations department. My wife is working as I speak at York in her 25th year in administration. We've lived here in Monterey for 35 years and are deeply involved in the community. My wife co-founded the local water polo Monterey Bay United Water Polo Club, where my daughter is currently an assistant coach. I served 33 years as a volunteer education associate for the Professional Applicators Professional Association, known as PAPA and Salinas, for the California State Department of Pesticide Regulations, as well as 38 years as a Eucharist, Eucharistic minister at San Carlos Church. I'm also an active outrigger canoe paddler for 25 years with the outrigger canoe club here on Monterey Beach, which is called the Hee Ilani Oke Kai, which is next to Wharf Number Two. I've competed in races locally and in Hawaii up to 42 miles and hosting native Pacific Island voyagers sailing and navigating by stars and far away as New Zealand, Fiji, Hawaii, visiting Monterey. Originally, I moved to Monterey Peninsula from Hawaii in 1968 with my five siblings. I attended Seaside High School. My wife attended Monterey High. And we both graduated from the Community College MPC. With a degree in ornamental horticulture and tremendous support from my colleagues, I also earned a teacher's credential in ornamental horticulture from the Education Department of the State of California to teach at the California Community Colleges. Prior to working in the Parks Department in my last position, I was a landscape manager and supervised other horticulture departments for Pebble Beach Company or resorts for 13 years. In my last position, my responsibilities covered all interior and exterior landscape assets and forests. A 1.125 million budget varying from year to year with 34 full-time employees, equipment, seasonal workers, annual budgets per departments, capital projects and special events all year. In my capacity, I was responsible for every aspect of operations and management across several departments, working closest with department managers to meet their needs. This included safety protocols, enforcing company and state requirements and industry standards, developing and communicating daily operations, creating safety and training programs and seasonal maintenance practices, as well as long-term landscape improvement projects. With my help in 1996, our departments achieved coveted national and international awards. Notably, we were the first resort in Monterey County to achieve a Forbes Five Star Award and the Continental Travelers Award for Best Resort globally that year. I received individual awards in the horticulture industry as well. In 1997, I received a grand award for special, special events from the National Association of Landscape Professionals in Fort Lauderdale, Florida for creating a 5,000-square-foot indoor golf course using artificial turf, sod, annual flowers, sand trap, water features and more. Also in 1997, I also awarded the prestigious Judges Award and Distinction Award for Special Events from the California Interior Planescape Association at Queen Mary in Long Beach. And in 1995, Pebble Beach Company Manager of the Year. In the 25 years of service for the city of Monterey Parks Department, I've covered 80% of the park's landscape and green belts area, rehabilitating, replacing overgrown neglected landscapes. Additionally, I supervise community agencies, including the Solid Debt Correctional Inmate Program, the Church of Latter Day Saints, youth volunteers and the City of Monterey Volunteers in the Park Program, as well as part-time workers in landscape maintenance, safety and industry standards. In my time, I was awarded the Golden Buck Award by then Assistant Manager Daniel Pick. And I am passionate about the work I do and the level of detail and expertise I bring to work daily. I bring decades of expertise, vision, safety procedures and industry standards to address grounds, forest, landscape and climate change topics. And I am eager to expand, advance my role, responsibility and position within the Parks Department to reflect my full capabilities and work with administration, local in agencies and association, city council and of course, Mary Williams. Thank you. And one thing I want to add is if anyone's interested, we do have a recreational program down at the beach. It's on Sundays from at 8 o'clock, the first and third Sunday. You're more than welcome. If there's experience needed, just come down with your beach attire and we'll take you in. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You want to do a photo with the council?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Should we have Alma?
All right. I also appreciated the additional narrative context in regards to your history and background. It helps us to get to know our workforce and allowing us to share that with the community allows us to make it more real for folks in regards to what it is that you all actually do and what your credentials are. You're clearly a professional and so I'm just appreciate you coming up and sharing a few additional words. Thank you. Alrighty. And with that, council, do you have any comments on the presentation? All right, we'll open it up to the public regarding the presentation specifically. So this is recognizing the anniversaries and milestones for our workforce. So check with the, in the chamber. Are there any public comments? I see one. Anybody else? Hey, Esther. Wow. Finally nice to see you in person at a council meeting. All right, we'll check online. Do the countdown for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have two folks online. And again, I just want to reiterate, this is public comment on the presentation for recognizing our workforce milestones and anniversaries. So we'll start in the chamber. Hi, Eric.
Hello, council. Eric Palmer, Monterey Vista neighborhood. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Lori. So 20 years ago, a public information official was typically plucked from like KSBW or, or the Herald because that's where people would typically get their news. And as we all know, those are downsizing more and people get their information in many different ways. So media relations are like the number one way to get hired. So Lori started out like myself as a specialist in one kind of area. She was a webmaster. But as this profession became more popular in government agencies, digital tools came out. And so Lori went from a webmaster to one of the most respected public information officers, not only in the region, but in the state. So can you imagine being a PIO and getting the word out during COVID, for example? So that was such a big important thing, messaging to protect residents' health, how to get rent and small business relief and to help those in need, how to get vaccines. She worked in an emergency operations center during multiple emergencies, started the weekly newsletter, which I really appreciate as a resident. And that started out as a paper publication that we put out. She's been a longtime ambassador on staff for sister city relationships, worked on bi-local campaigns during economic downturns. There's been many during the past 20 years. So it's really fulfilling to help celebrate the revitalization of downtown in our communications platforms. And I think she can take a lot of credit for the success of Measure S and Measure P for reporting on the successful repaving of major arteries and also neighborhood streets and sidewalks. So it makes me really happy when I'm driving by these projects and seeing the signs that say Measure S and Measure P. So we let residents know that that's where that money is coming from. So perhaps in the future, we'll be able to renew, renew those measures. So she's done so much for the community. I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about that profession and how important it is and how lucky we are to have someone like her on staff.
Thanks, Eric. With that, we'll take our public commenters online.
Yes, we had one hand go down. So we just have one commenter. It's a telephone caller with the last three digits, 705. You can unmute and go ahead, please.
Yes. Hello. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Yes, I want, I heard Louis' name mentioned. Is he going to be retiring?
Yes, he's, he's going to be retiring. And just for, for clarity, we're not answering questions during public comment, but feel free to make your, your public comments.
Yes. I want to thank Louis and the city council, the former city council for cutting out herbicides and pesticides in our, well herbicides anyway, in our community. He did an incredible, great service that was backed by the former city council members and Hans as well. And we, as a result, have been able to walk the streets without having to bring Roundup and lifeboat bait into our homes and poisoning everyone. It's now recognized as a cancer-causing chemical, even though Monsanto lied and said it was harmless and is still lying and saying it's harmless. But they have been sued and the lawsuits have been won. And I think it's very imperative that we all keep aware of what the chemical companies are doing. And I think it was very brave of Louis to stand up to that. And thank you so much, Louis, and all those that were involved. And hopefully you will continue doing so. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you all for those that added some additional color to all the great work that our, our workforce does. And just to add to your point, Eric, Lori is probably one of the staff members that we get to interact with most on the council because she sits in the city manager's office. And I have to agree, I get a lot of feedback from the public in regards to the, the newsletter, the e-news blast that goes out. A lot of people appreciate that. And, and then maybe use it as a little bit of a public service announcement too, to say that the city manager's office is now giving recaps from the council meetings. So there's a quick snapshot for those that don't have time to go back and watch all the council meetings as well. So I would just encourage folks to share that because it's a really nice way of getting a, a nice broad overview of what the council actions have been at each council meeting. So again, thank you to all of our city staff. I know that the job can be thankless oftentimes. And, and so we appreciate you. All right. With that, we will go on to general public comments. So this is for items that are not on today's agenda. If you have a public comment that you'd like to make, we'll start on the chamber and just check to see if folks want to speak on general public comments. Check to see if folks want to speak on general public comment by a show of hands or by standing to the left of the podium. So I see one taker in the chamber. And then in the meantime, I'm going to check online for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom and do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And we have three folks online, so we'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
Steve Lightfoot here. Can I have a little camera on my shirt here, please?
Go ahead.
Can I have a camera going? No, can I have a camera on me, please?
I don't know why the camera is actually not on.
I know why. It's because you're, because you're discriminating against Steve Lightfoot.
Nobody's discriminating against.
There we go. Now we know why you're discriminating against me. Okay, I've got a rally coming up in less than a week, Sunday, December 8th, people. It's your last best chance to help John Lennon, the John Lennon of Benjamin. And I need you people to protest. If people don't protest, you're never going to be living free. You know, you're the kind of city that has a newspaper. The day after Joe Biden had his head handed to him by Donald Trump in the debate. You have a newspaper that did not print one word of that debate. Not one word. We're living in a mind controlled city. Now we've got Biden pardoning his son, saying it was all rigged against him while we know. That the system was rigged against Trump this whole time. Now I'm fighting two tickets right now. Officer LK, I believe, gave me a parking ticket last week on a Sunday. When there's really no parking enforced, it was completely contrived, it's going to be contested. And I noticed you had a major blowout in your water main the day after. Goodie goodie. The guy who's been bugging me on the homeless end of the world, his favorite little pet lizard died. So my avenging, oh man, when I went to Hillsburg last, last week. Distributed all my, this is your last chance letters to only Hillsburg where I was raised. The next three days later, they were 20 feet raising in the, in the river level with the flood flooded. Like I mean, my avenging angel is still kicking. Lennonmurdertruth.com. I, I know. It's hard to get up and protest people, especially against your government. It reminds me of when I was a salesman. And we were all getting in this van to learn how to be salesman to sell these coupons door to door. And suddenly we're dropped off and we're selling them. I go, what? He expects to sell them right now? Well, I, I tied my boss and I made good living doing that and. You just have to kind of get out there and do it, folks. If you don't protest, you're going to live like the people in Russia. And the people in China, you know, China, they quashed their rebellion by killing their, their people. I came in square and in Russia, the president was killing his own people in high rises to get a war started with Chechnya. And they live in a world where these, these rulers are still in place and they just bend to the will of these tyrants. And you're no better, you're spoiled right now, you're stupid right now Monterey. But you have a chance to help the John Lennon man Sunday, downtown Monterey, please be there.
And we'll take it to our online speakers.
Starting with Shinari.
Hi, this is Shinari Abona in Monterey. I actually wanted to just say some positive words about our police department. And also talk about the Community Police Academy, which I believe will be starting up in February of 2025. This was a program I participated, participated in a couple of years ago. Just wanting to learn more about the community and the people behind the scenes. And I wasn't really sure what to expect, but I'm really happy I got the opportunity to participate. Meet the public safety officers, city staff and community leaders. Who dedicate their time to address public health concerns like things like opioid overdose deaths. It also had the opportunity to learn about the MDOT program, so the multi-disciplinary outreach team. Which is a group of mental health, social workers and other social service providers that work with MPD to address issues like. Unhoused individuals, substance abuse, interpersonal violence, mental health crises amongst other calls. And this program is truly cutting edge. It's really impressive that we have it here in Monterey. And I think it's an amazing reflection of what modern community policing looks like. So I walked away from this program feeling safer, feeling reassured and having a better understanding of. What the MPD does for the community. I really appreciated meeting the men and women who serve in our community. And them taking time to answer our questions. More importantly, we were able to have just difficult conversations about public perceptions of police and accountability. And I felt like everyone that I spoke to handled those conversations with both grace and understanding. So I encourage all residents to participate in the program to learn more about what MPD does for the community. I think it's an amazing program. I hope it continues to get funding and that it continues to live on. And I also want to close by saying words that were said at the beginning of the program by Police Chief Ober. Which were remember who you are and what you represent. And I think just in our current climate, politically with a lot of divisiveness. It's important to remember those words and those words certainly have stayed with me long past my participation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to call on one telephone caller. I note that another one's hand went lowered. So if that was unintentional, please raise your hand again. I will be calling on Brian Rosen, I believe. Go ahead, please.
Oh, hi. Well, I just wanted to talk about the, what's going on here in the world. It's terrible what Mr. Panetta is contributing towards a genocide of entire people in Israel. And he's giving weapons for, and along with most other congress members to commit this horrible genocide. Of the Palestinian people having their lives rubbed out, women and children. It's just a terrible, terrible thing and I wish to God you do a resolution against this. We shouldn't be funding the government of Israel. They usurp the title of Israel. It's not the. It's, it's their, they've lost sight of what the Holy Land is really about. It's not, it's about peace and justice and non-violence. And Mr. Panetta just voted for a bill. He was one of the few Democrats who did. To, you know, say that give the president authority to declare any nonprofit is terrorist supporting without any due process. That's like something you give to a dictator, you know, when there's no due process, they can just do whatever they want to do. With no checks and balances on their power. And Panetta, because of Mr. Panetta and others, 15 other demo, 14 other Democrats, it went through. So he's a bad man and he's complicit in murder and he needs to be removed from office. And it's just not good what's going on. So I wish this council would oppose, you know, the, the war machine. The military industrial complex that Martin Luther King and Dwight Eisenhower. You know, warned about, there's nothing more dangerous than government out of control. You know, that's why we have a system of checks and balances. And when the government and the police and the military become too powerful, guess what? The rest of us are in really deep, deep trouble because power gets abused. Power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. So I would do a resolution condemning Mr. Panetta for what he's done. It's a great, great crime that he's done and resolution suggesting that he needs to be removed from office. Because he's a bad man to be helping to kill women and children over there and that's exactly what he's doing. And I don't know, we shouldn't just sit silent when our brothers and sisters are being murdered around the world. And our military is one of the most violent forces in the world. Maybe there, I think the people themselves often are nice. You know, I remember some hearing about Indian massacre and the public was against the mistreatment of the Indians. Until a stagecoach was destroyed and then public opinion changed. It was probably a setup. But you know, it's the same thing was happening back then, collective punishment. And now we're doing it now to the Palestinians. What we did to the Native Americans. There were 500 people prosecuted for this massacre and only one was found guilty and.
That's the last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we didn't get that other hand back up. Okay. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close general public comment and we'll move the consent agenda. Counsel, do you wish to pull anything?
Nope.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. This is a time to request an item be pulled. Or if you have a general comment that you'd like to make on any of the consent items, you could do so at this time as well. We'll check with the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on the consent agenda? Right, not seeing any takers. We'll check online. We'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one.
All right, Mr. Rosen, go ahead, please.
How many do we have? Sorry. Two.
Hello, Brian Rosen here. I would like to comment on a couple of, a few of your resolutions. First of all, you want to approve the purchase of three parking enforcement GO4s and for $121,000. But they've removed parking spaces, free parking all over town. It's been a great hardship to workers. Across from the baseball field on Figaro, it's all two hour parking now. So naturally you need more parking enforcement vehicles, I believe it is to do that. But that's a lot of money and that's really cost could go for other things. And you just need to give back more free perk parking because that really hurts the regular people. And the secondly, spending $390,000 on banquet chairs. I mean, when we have poor people on the streets in the cold, I mean, don't we have better priorities? No wonder we have the kind of society we have. Maybe we need to make some sacrifices for a while. And then you want to do number five, $561,000 for a storm drain master plan and utility rate study. I mean, there's such a thing as a study industry where they study things to death when the answers can be found a lot cheaper. From experience from other cities and that's a hell of a lot of money to be spending. While again, we have all these unhoused elderly individuals and people in desperate financial situation that need help to help themselves. And so do we really need to spend that much money? It's just so ridiculous spending that much money and neglecting the real needs. When we can just do what's needed, like better storm drain system without borrow on other people's experience. But the study industry, people make a lot of money with all this stuff. You're, you're making a lot of money for people. And then three professional storm agreements, number six for building for on-call project management. Construction management, again, there's $750,000 can't. I mean, there's got to be a cheaper way. There's so many able city staff and so forth, volunteers. I mean, do we really want to spend $750,000? We should be providing housing, maybe converting hotels for housing for low income people. The rich people are going to be okay no matter what, but let's put our, let's put our resources into helping those who need it most, the poor. The low income and I just object to spending, I think this is spending way too much money. And I think there are cheaper ways you could do things and you need to prioritize how you're spending your money. While the people are desperate, they're dying in the cold. And it seems like I've been up over three minutes. Are we still on the line together?
Can hear you. Second flipped.
Oh, great. Well, I'm enjoying speaking with you and. I, I do hope that there will be some real progress for making Monterey a better place. Thank you very much.
All right, next is Ms. Moffett.
Yes, so on, on the storm drains, you know, the other day I was bicycling and I came across a storm drain with a plastic bag. Caught in it and I noticed that the curb was not protected. There wasn't a storm drain there. So that plastic bag at the next rainfall was going to go into the ocean. So I would suggest with the storm drains that you make sure you put guardrails along the curb as well. And I think that would greatly reduce plastic pollution in our bay. And then as far as parking spaces go, I noticed that. You're taking away more and more of the three-day parking away on Figaroa Street. And that was very important for workers because they now have to go out every two hours. And drive their cars around for parking places and that's a lot of pollution. And you know, we need to have some free things, not everything in America should be, you know, costly. And you know, prohibitively so. So I hope that you don't take any more of those spaces away. And you utilize that money instead for planting trees. I'm talking huge trees, pine trees and you know, Monterey pine and eucalyptus trees. That are really going to help our global warming. And instead, you know, you want to buy chairs, you know, for $300,000 or whatever it is. Banquet chairs when we need right now, we're in a climate emergency and this city. Is, doesn't seem to get it. And instead you're cutting down trees and you know, eucalyptus trees have to come down because they're non-natives. Well, so are we non-natives. So does that mean we remove ourselves? This rhetoric is destroying our, any chance for really moving in an emergency global direction right now. And it's being talked on, on the radio BBC all the time. And, and this, this city just won't even plant any trees. You know, they, it's like they have a hate on for trees. So please, let's get with the program, start planting trees because of the vacuum cleaners of the sky. And they're beautiful and they will only beautify Monterey. Use that money accordingly for those projects. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll bring it, we'll comment, bring it back to the council. Just a few quick remarks. I, for Brian's remarks. I just have to say that we're a full-service city. So in as important as the items that he's identifying are in regards to taking care of our homeless community and otherwise. We need to do that, but we also need to do the things that are on our consent agenda to run the operations of the city. So I just wanted to provide a statement there. If there's something specific that, that you feel that we should be addressing better. And, and you have a proposal for us to consider, we're more than happy to look at that and. We're a public agency, so we're trying to do the service of, of our community. And it includes taking care of the conference center, which pays for itself. The parking enforcement is, is a requirement. We can't just make the parking free because there is maintenance that is required of our streets. And, and we don't want to prioritize vehicles over other means of transportation, though. Those spaces are available for the public. And then the storm drain master plan. Is, is essential for us to make sure that we're addressing the impacts to climate change and taking care of our basic infrastructure that. Oftentimes we take for granted because it's something that's below ground and we don't really think about it. So that's, it's needed, it needs to be done. It's an appropriate, those are all sources of good allocation of funding. And then Ms. Moffett's comment regarding the, the black bag that she saw. If those, if folks have those types of experiences, I encourage you to contact city staff so that we can be aware of that. And if, if there's concern around that kind of debris going into, into the oceans. There's actually state law that requires every jurisdiction, every coastal community jurisdiction to prevent that from happening. So if we're missing the mark there, please let us know the specific location so that we can address that and get on top of that. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve all consent agenda items. Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll go to our public appearance item for this afternoon, which is item number seven, Measure P and S and O report. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, this is Measure P and S report. You have heard this quite a few times over since 2015. It's basically part of the special sales tax approval by the voters to. Report annually that we are conforming with the requirement of that special sales tax. And that all expenditures are being done according, in accordance with that sales tax measure. And so reporting tonight will be our finance director and followed by our city engineer with a brief report. And then I also saw in the audience, we have members of the Measure P and S committee here who might also want to say a few things. So with that, I give it to, punt it over to Raffella King, our finance director.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, councilman, staff, citizens. So tonight, as Hans said, I want to talk to you about the findings of Measure P and S and then the oversight committee for their. For our sales tax. Okay. So just to give the audience an overview background, just want to share a little of the history on how, how and why measure P and S came about. So prior to 2014, the condition of Monterey's streets and sidewalks and their roadway infrastructure was declining due to dwindling fund, funding resources. So the city needed a new funding resource and so to address the deferred maintenance. And in 2014, 74% of Monterey's voters approved measure P. It's a 1% sales tax that went into effect on April 1st, 2015 and expired March 31st, 2019. So in November of 2018, 82% of Monterey's voters approved measure S, which is a continuation of measure P. And that was effective from April 1, 2019, and it goes through March 31st of 2027. We do realize that we need to be paying very close attention to, um, to this ending date. So in addition to providing funding, measure P and S requires the creation of a citizens oversight committee that meets periodically, we meet on a quarterly basis to review measure P and measure S expenditures. As Hans noted in the audience, our chair, Pat Aldinger, and also Carol Chabagian is in the audience. So if you would like to come and say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, council and city staff. Rick Aldinger, I'm, have recently replaced Carol Chabagian as chair of the measure P and S committee. Carol took that responsibility on for far longer than she, uh, uh, needed to. And so finally we giving her a break. Uh, first, I want to just acknowledge the committee itself. Carol Chabagian here in chambers with me. Uh, also on the committee, Rick Hoyer, uh, Justin Chang and our newest member, Payam Ostovic. And, uh, uh, you know, we have all met regularly with city staff to discuss, uh, data and progress on measure P and S. And I, I want to let you know that city staff has been very accommodating to us. Uh, many times we might not understand, uh, the data being presented to us or the format in which it's being presented, anything we've asked for. A city staff has been, uh, very accommodating and, uh, able to change the format that we receive data in and information in, answer questions and being just incredibly helpful for the understanding of the committee. Also, uh, P and S has, uh, done a tremendous job as Rafael is, is outlining in her presentation in improving the quality of pavement and sidewalks and storm drains and sewers in, in our city. And, uh, you know, it's been a very worthwhile and productive project. And as P and S nears sunsetting, I would just encourage, uh, council and city staff to, uh, be looking forward to how, when this measure sunsets in 2027, how those streets that we've worked so hard to bring, uh, back into condition, uh, very good condition, by completing a lot of deferred maintenance. Uh, how will we keep those streets from deteriorating once P and S sunsets? And, uh, uh, that's something that, uh, would be a shame if we didn't have something in place to make sure that, uh, those streets are maintained once that happens. And so I just, I want to thank staff, uh, council, the voters, and certainly, uh, my fellow committee members for, for the work that has been done on this. Thank you.
Afternoon, Mayor, City Councilman. I, yes, I've been, I've been involved with, from the beginning with measure P, when we were looking to see if we could do something with some money. It has worked very well. I actually have a new volunteer job recently, driving for ITN. I'm driving seniors to appointments. And I've gotten to see some, we, I would get 67 pages or so of pavement condition. I know people are like, I know what PCI means and people think I'm crazy. But I have now driving seniors around a lot in Monterey. In our next meeting, I want to talk about some streets that I've seen because we see our overall pavement condition has gone from, it was 50, 51% in the beginning. We're up about 79% now, which is incredibly good. I remember Mayor Clyde saying that 75% was very good in pavement condition. I'm like, well, you're one of your teachers, 75% is a C, but in, in pavement, it's spectacular. But, and I agree that I think if we don't continue, it will be 10 years now. You're going to have, have, just lose because the pavement condition will start to drift down again. And then we'll still be around and then we'll be back in the same situation. But as I say, I, I, I will in our next, our next quarterly meeting. I do want to look at some pavement segments that I've been driving recently. And I guess that's, I should, I should applaud these people who allow me to volunteer so I can see more Monterey streets. Thank you. Thank you for supporting us. We all support the city of Monterey very strongly and look forward to doing it in the future. Thanks.
Anything else from staff? Oh, you're, yep, the slides are there. I'm sorry.
No, I can't leave it. I'll tell you the numbers.
That's tough one.
Okay. So I wanted to start to, um, talk about the revenue, so, um, and expenses. So since inception, our revenue, um, that we've generated just from the tax has been 93,111, uh, 110,000. And interest, we've accumulated 1.4 million. And the other, other revenue, 325,000, um, that's come up a couple of times. It's actually a reimbursement from Middlebrook Institute for their, um, share of a project that we did. And so our expenditures, so for this fiscal year, um, this just past fiscal year of 2024, um, we had 12,730,000, 760,000, 69,000 in revenue. From incentive, a total of 94,897,221, which is a huge, 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 um, number for revenue to come in to take care of the streets. So under expenditures this fiscal year, storm drains, we spent 1.5 million, sidewalks, 1.8 million. We did excessive amount of work on pavements, 8.9 million, ADA improvements, 832,000. So we had a total of 13,150,163, um, of work that we've done cumulatively. So overall, our ending fund balance as of June 30, 2024 is 17,307, um, and 331. So year over year, I just want to tell you what, what this, these numbers look like from June 30 for the last few years, from June 30, um, shows the changes from 2021, 2022, 2023 in the fiscal years as compared to the 2024 fiscal year. And which areas all the money was spent in. So as you can see, the increase in revenues, the tax by 45,000, interest by 306,000, and other revenue 325,000. So the total increase was 677,000. And there's an increase in expenditures of nearly 8.8 million. As you can see, storm drains from, um, year to year, 1.1, um, sidewalk, 754,000, pavement, 6.6 million, ADA, 225,000. So total spent 8.7. So we've spent in essence, um, we had a decrease in our fund balance of 8.1 million. So 105% change of year over year from the year before. And so with that, I want to bring up Andrew Easterling, our city engineer, to talk a little bit more about the executive dashboard and some specific projects that they've been working.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Andrew Easterling and I'm pleased to bring you a brief presentation on our measure PS update from Public Works. Oh, is there a different, can we pull up the other slides? Okay, thank you. All right. So I'm going to give you a history of measure PS, a summary of some of our completed projects and a little snapshot of projects we have planned. And I promise to be brief, but I may, uh, reiterate some of the points that were already made earlier tonight. Uh, let's, here we go. So his, so just a brief history on measure PS. Measure P was adopted in 2015 with a 74% approval rate from the voters. It was renewed as measure S in 2018 with an 82% approval rate. And that'll keep us going until 2027 when it sunsets. Uh, since its inception, our PCI, our pavement condition index, which is our, our scoring metric for how we'd rate our pavement maintenance, has improved from a score of 54 to 81, uh, which is quite a bit of work. The graph on the left shows us how it's improved over the past, uh, five years. Uh, and on the right kind of shows how we've moved the needle from 54, which is a pretty poor pavement condition to 81, which is pretty good. I think you guys have seen this image before from when we presented the infrastructure slides. You can see that, uh, 54 would be considered an at-risk pavement condition. Uh, that's at the point where, uh, the pavement's at a point in its life cycle or it's hitting an inflection point and it's becoming a lot more expensive and a lot harder to implement, uh, maintenance projects. So keeping it up above, uh, 75 is ideal where the cost to maintain our roads aren't as excessive as it would be if it continues to fall down the cliff. So the longer we wait, the more expensive things get and keeping it in that, uh, good range is ideal. The pavement projects, we've spent about 55.8 million, uh, invested into our pavement projects over the past few years since, uh, measure PS, uh, was inception. We've addressed about 85% of our streets and our score again has increased from 54 to 81. And below is a picture you guys might remember from earlier this year when we were working on lighthouse. Uh, some more before and after photos that really demonstrates the difference that measure PS has made. This is an image of Slote, which was implemented a few years ago. You can see the pavement's distressed. In addition to the pavement starting to fade and look distressed, your pavement markings start to go away, becomes harder to see crosswalks, center lines and the bike lanes. So you can see that the, the pavement maintenance really goes a long way. Again, ADA projects, uh, we've implemented 11.4 million of ADA improvement projects. And we've done 236 ADA ramps. Uh, we've touched six of our signalized intersections, uh, but we still have some work to do, to go. Uh, we have probably about, uh, 23 million of ADA upgrades needed. And that's coming to you soon, in the next couple of weeks in our ADA transition plan. So more before and after photos, just so you can see what a difference the measure PS funds have made. On the left, you can see what North Fremont looked like before we implemented ADA improvements. If you squint, you can see the push button is kind of facing the street. So if someone was in a wheelchair, it'd be really tough to access that and squeezed by the bush. Uh, once we've implemented the project, we've created these nice accessible walkways where folks in wheelchairs or who have other disabilities can access push buttons and can navigate safely across the road. Uh, we've also implemented a number of sidewalk projects. We've completed seven sidewalk projects throughout the city, uh, since, uh, measure PS was adopted. Uh, we spent a little over $7 million and we've also repaired a little over 4,000 uplifts throughout the city for removing tripping hazards and liability to the city. And lastly, I'll just touch on some of the, uh, measure PS storm drain projects we've done. We spent about 5.4 million of storm drain, uh, with money on storm drain improvement projects. The most notable are the Iris Canyon sediment removal project, which many of you probably remember that's been, um, uh, taking place over the last year and then the rain a lot. And those are photos of the bio swell that were excavated. And that's what it looks like, um, because it's kind of tough to see. It's underground, so it's out of sight, out of mind, but that's what it looks like when it's constructed. So what's coming up in the future, we have quite a few projects on the horizon. We have the 2425, uh, road resurfacing projects, which I'll show you a map of all those streets in a minute. We have the citywide, um, uh, road rehab projects, phases four through seven, which includes Jackson Street, Van Buren Street, Hawthorne, Monroe, Eldorado and Cass Street. We also have a few phases of curb ramp projects coming up, which are going to touch Old Town, Downtown, Del Monte Beach and Eldorado and Cass Street. We have ADA traffic signal improvements that are on the horizon at Franklin, at Washington and Franklin at Tyler. We also have Fremont and Abrego and Aguado and Glenwood and the Hopper for signalized ADA improvement projects. Uh, kind of a big one that's coming up is the pump station 11 repair or rehab. And that's the pump station near El Estero. If that fails, um, we could have some flooding around El Estero. We, we could lose some access. And then we have the Via Esperanza storm drain repair, which is the section of, um, Via Esperanza, where there's a retaining wall and a swale that's fallen into the creek and we need to implement those repairs. So those are coming soon. I mentioned the RSR, uh, resurfacing projects. The image on the left shows all the streets that we plan on touching with our, uh, road resurfacing program. That image also includes, uh, phases four and five, which we just completed. And it's also available on monterey.gov fixing streets. If you don't want to squint at this map, you can hop on the, a website and find a, a full list of the products that are coming. And with that, I'm just going to kind of take us home and say, you know, it's, we're really fortunate. We're in a self-help city where we have a reliable revenue source to implement these projects. Uh, we've got our pavement condition up from, uh, at risk 51 to, uh, 81, which is great. Uh, it will require roughly $5 million per year to maintain our PCI score of 75 and prevent us from falling down that cliff where it starts to get more expensive. So we're, we're always fighting time. So there's always going to be constant investment. We also have 23 million in ADA and right-of-way improvements that we need to make, uh, through our transition plan. Uh, we have 44 miles of storm drain infrastructure that we also have to maintain. So, uh, the maintenance is a never-ending task that we will be, uh, working on, you know, in the future. And, um, having this self-help funding mechanism has been great, but it will expire in March of 2027. And with that, I'll hand it back over. Thank you.
With that, we just want to, um, what I want to do is just, thank you. Recommend that we, that council receives the reports for measure P and S.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions, council? Please, that's Robert.
First, thank you so much to the citizens, um, oversight, um, committee and to the city staff and to, um, just everybody that's involved in this. It takes a lot and we really appreciate you taking us from 54 all the way to 81 and doing it in a timely manner. Um, my question is, are we on track for 2027? And, um, the projects that are listed for forthcoming dollar amount, are we, uh, in the parameter that we need to be to make sure that those get completed by that time? I would say we are, we are very much aware that 2027 is coming up and that we need to take it back to the voters on, in 2026. So we are very much aware. Um, so we're not sleeping on it, on that date. So, um, we haven't put anything in place as of today, but we are working on it. And as far as, I think my last fund balance, uh, 17 million is what's left after the projects that are already been, um, reserved for. So we have, we still have funding in that, in that, in the measure P and S account. So, and we are bringing in about approximately 12 million a year. So we're still working actively. So you're saying after the 17 million, uh, the project that he just went over, they're include, that they already have been taken out of that money? I believe so. And allocated? I believe so. Help me if I'm wrong.
Sure. So we have money that's already encumbered and locked into professional service agreements with consultants who are working on design plans. We still need to go out to bid on some of these construction projects that are forecasted in the next few years. That's when that money will get locked in and encumbered with those contracts. Uh, but we are confident that the projects I presented, we can fully fund with the existing budget and the revenue, the anticipated revenue over the next few years.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith?
Yeah, um, I noticed on the first charts where it's talking about the timeframe of the sunset of 2027. And when it started, the, the voters voted in November of 2018 and it became effective in March. So if you could explain, and I think I know the answer, but I would ask if you could explain if it's voted in November of this next, when it sunsets in 2026. If it, if we voted for it in 2026, November, why does it start in March and not start January, as an example?
My understanding is just, is the timing. So I believe that, I'm not, Hans, I'm going to need you to help me with this. If there is, um, a particular timing that's legislative for, that's per law, but I know that it takes some time for the tax to kick in. So can you assist now?
So I think it's a sales tax. So it's probably, they can't give a sales tax.
Sales tax is always two months behind. So if you, basically if you buy something in January, it's January when you spend the money. And then there's February when the state is calculating that money and it's March by the time we actually receive their first payment.
Yeah. So the, the money, the money that we receive is remitted from the state due to the sales tax. Yeah, so the, the mon- the money that we receive is remitted from the state due to the sales tax. It's collective.
Correct.
Uh, or through the county. Um, so what, what's your projection in terms of a launch of a renewed measure S? We know if November twenty-six is the time that we would ask the voters. Um, as I recall, the timeline is like August that we would have to declare in two thousand and twenty-six. So we know we have projections. We know we have a list of projects that take us through twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, but I'd like to hear your opinion in terms of, when do we bring this back to the council to say, okay, council, what do you want to do? And when we launch that education part, what's the timeframe for that?
Two things. One, um, that's the same question that we've been asking, the oversight committee has been asking as well. Um, Hans and I, we talk about this during our meetings, and he doesn't know it yet, but starting as soon as we adopt twenty-six as budget, I'm going to be sitting in his office every week talking about we need to do this. So, um, with that said, I think that as soon as, um, July of next year, that we really need to start the campaign and, and get this out to the citizens so that we can have it ready to go on the ballot.
Okay, so a fiscal twenty-five, meaning July.
Correct.
It would come to the council, and then that would probably be one of the topics that we would be approaching.
Yes.
And that would give us plenty of time to ramp up.
Yes, that's the year.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Thank you. So all the questions, I have.
Any questions on this thing? Either, yeah, Councilor, please.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm pleased to, um, with the project, the Iris Canyon project, the way that, um, that was accomplished. I just wanted to acknowledge staff for that. I recently biked through there. I saw the work that was done. And in particular, um, I was happy to see that the mature, many of the mature trees that were there were preserved. So that was, you know, preserving trees is something this council cares about, and, uh, I, I believe staff did a good job of that. Um, I also just wanted to note, um, the Via Esperanza street closure or kind of closure to local traffic is something that I've been monitoring for a while, so I'm glad to see that's, um, you know, that's, uh, coming down the pipeline. And then the last thing I wanted to comment on, because it doesn't get a lot of attention, because we don't see them, but the storm drains, you know, they, those were originally like a hundred-year-old storm drains. And when we put this measure S together the first time, it was really important to make sure we address that so that we don't have flooding and we don't have, um, you know, those kind of problems. It's the kind of thing that you don't think about until suddenly you have a big problem. So it's, um, it's great to see the progress we're making, and thank you to staff, and thank you to, uh, the oversight committee for the work you've done.
Councilor, you got some Garcia.
Hmm, thank you for the, uh, presentation, and, um, I, I think it's, it's really impressive how the, uh, the, the quality of our streets has, has really, um, you know, through the efforts of staff and, and everybody involved has, has increased, and, and you could see it as you're driving through the city. Um, so thank you for that. My, my question is, um, I'm wondering if, if someone from staff could maybe describe a little bit? And, and I don't know if this is possible, I'm just gonna ask it. In the timeframe that these measures have been active, could you describe maybe the, uh, the, the pattern or the, uh, schedule of when streets are, uh, improved, right, or resurfaced? And, and I guess what I'm really going at is, by the time this measure sunsets, have we covered all streets at least once, or, or to what percentage? I s- I see some, uh, deliberation going.
So, so we, we used a tactical approach, uh, in two thousand and fourteen with measure P, where we basically, uh, uh, went after streets and neighborhoods. Uh, it was important for us to, to roll out in the neighborhoods, and the very first project that, that we did in, uh, measure P was a project that was actually on loan by measure P. We, we upfronted the costs with the general fund, and then measure P paid us back. Because for us, it was, uh, very important that the neighbors gave us, uh, gave us just four years. And so they, at that time, uh, the, there was a kind of a sentiment that nobody, not nobody, but there was, uh, not as much trust uh, in, into this tax measure. Will they really do something in the streets? And we conscientiously went, uh, since we had a before, um, PCI rating at that time into our neighborhoods, and we touched every single neighborhood during the first four years. And it was very intentionally done. When you look, and we did this to your Lighthouse Avenue, um, we are now touching the main materials, uh, that, that cost also the most money to restore and repave. But, um, we could have started with Lighthouse Avenue, uh, because it was already shot at that time. Um, but, uh, the, the, the intent was to, to roll it out. We have, with measure P and measure S, touched certain streets already twice. Um, uh, because we, we, we see that, uh, if a street reaches a certain point, it's easier to invest money in a street that is not completely gone. And again, that was the curve that, that the city engineer shared with you. And, um, I, I cannot say, I know, touch all hundred percent, but it was certainly the intent to do that, and I really hope that, um, Andrew and Andrea can, can talk a little bit more about this, oh, what the percentage will be. But, um, I, I very much remember that the very first project started, and the next three, four, five, six projects at that time, we absolutely went almost in neighborhoods to show neighbors, here's your tax dollars at work. And it worked, because in, um, nineteen and twenty-eighteen, when the second tax measure was approved, uh, eighty-two percent, that was the single highest special sales tax approval in the state of California with eighty-two percent. And, and so the, the trust that the voters had in us in twenty-eighteen was reflective of the, uh, investments that we intentionally put into the neighborhoods. And that's a long way of maybe not giving you the right answer, because I didn't tell you if we touch every single street or not. I really don't know that right now, but I know that our emphasis was and remains to, uh, to look after our neighborhoods as well.
And, and just to follow up to that, uh, would I be correct in assuming that the, uh, streets that we went back to are maybe streets with high traffic volumes or? I don't know.
It, it would be any, any type of combination of high traffic volume or certain deterioration that happens there, uh, based on, um, uh, uh, maybe utility cuts that happen there, et cetera. So the, the pavement management system that should track of that gives us the recommendation what streets we have to touch at what time.
Okay.
And, and the pavement management system to a degree, uh, gets injections from the engineers and their own observations as well. So it's not just that we do what, um, the management system spits out the streets. There's also an element where the engineers, uh, based on their knowledge, inject themselves and, and make sure that certain roads are being resurfaced. And I know that the engineers promised me before twenty-tw- twenty-twenty-seven that we will do Hawthorne in New Monterey. And, and I just remind them of that, because that is the street that is, um, where Dr. Barber and I live. And, uh, it's, it's in a dismal state, and they promised me that we'll have it done before the sunset of, of measure PNS. And I publicly, um, want to, uh, remind them of that.
Yeah. Thank you for that, and, and, and that reminds me also of, uh, a few remarks that I've heard, I think, from public comment in the past. And I know for sure in my conversations with residents in District Four, um, relating to North Fremont and also, um, Fremont and Monroe's, right? And I think the, uh, the conversations there are more about the, the streets, uh, having been, uh, laid out with cement. How does?
Concrete, yeah.
Uh, correct, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. Um, so how, how does that? Um, yeah, I guess, how is that impacted by the current plant, uh, you know, re- resurfaced streets?
Yeah, uh, I, I don't want to dominate here. The city engineer can talk, and the concrete streets are the most expensive streets that we have, and they will consume a lot of funding, and foam is, is, for instance, also, uh, on the, on the radar for us to do.
Correct. So our concrete streets were kind of saved for last. We got the low-hanging fruit first, and we took care of a lot of the easy streets, and that was what our model was recommending. But we still have like foam and Franklin, uh, these other concrete streets to, to deal with. We are working with consultants who kind of specialize in this work to do a benefit cost analysis to figure out what the right treatment's going to be. So we're looking at soil conditions, traffic conditions, uh, and trying to make a replacement, whether or not we're going to come back with slab replacement, or not, we're going to come out and demo it and replace it, or blacktop it with asphalt concrete. So we're trying to figure out how to most efficiently spend our money, um, and how to kind of maximize the lifespan of our pavement. But the concrete streets do last a long time, but they also cost the most to maintain, so we're, we're trying to consider options right now. But we'll be coming back with, uh, both foam and Franklin pretty soon. Awesome. Thank you.
And while we had the topic, I, I want to add, there are also three more funding sources for, for road, uh, improvements. That's measure X, uh, that, that has, has been very good for us. Uh, I think that's an annual infusion of one point four, one point seven million dollars. There's SB one money that is coming in from the state as well as still gas tax money. So, um, there are still additional funding sources of, that, that contribute and help, uh, and supplement our street resurfacing. So that, that is definitely helping us, um, tremendously.
Um, thank you, staff, for the presentation, um, and to the measure P and S committee for your work in this space. Um, there were, in one of the slides, it showed what the, what are, with the averages in the, I think it was like the Bay Area, but do we have an assessment of like our neighboring jurisdictions? Is that something that maybe we could? I'm just, I don't know if it's too much to, to gather that. We, I don't have that readily available. TAMC might, uh, one of the requirements through a measure X is reporting on, uh, municipality's payment condition index. So that's something I might be able to ask from our partnering agencies, uh, but I don't have it readily available. Okay, and just, i- if it's, if it's not too much of a, a lift, it might be something nice to include in future reports, just to kind of see how we're doing compared to some of our neighboring jurisdictions. I, I had gotten some questions in regards to, um, folks s- saying that their streets in Monterey are crappy compared to our neighbors. And I said, no, no, I actually think we're doing pretty good, um, but it would be nice to kind of back that up with some, with some data. Um, and then I, I don't know if this is where Dr. Barber was going in her question earlier, um, but uh, the question is, how far are we towards fixing every street? So I know that that was kind of the intent. Um, what does that gap look like? And, um, yeah. Sure. So I went back through our Street Saber model, which is our pavement management database, and it looks like we've roughly touched about eighty-five percent of our streets over the past few years. Uh, so that would mean about fifteen percent of our streets we still haven't, uh, gotten to with measure PS funds. Um, we are working on a, a five-year projection where we're going to go in the next few years, um, uh, using our Street Saber database. And kind of, I'm going to give you an engineering answer for how the sausage made. It, it really all depends. Uh, we try to make sure that the pavement's not falling off the curve into a point where it's getting really expensive to repair. Uh, so we're sometimes maintaining streets that look like they're in good condition, and we're coming back a little frequently, but that's because we're preventing it from falling off that cliff. Once it started to go down, it's already more expensive, and it might be better investment strategy to let it deteriorate a little bit more and then come back and rehab it. Uh, it might be the most biggest bang for our buck to maintain roads that are in good condition, uh, to prevent them from falling off. So that's why we've sometimes come back to streets, uh, whereas there are some streets that have already kind of fallen off the cliff. And to let it go a little longer is not going to significantly change the cost to do those repairs, which are going to be more expensive than just keeping us, uh, a street from falling off that cliff. And then out of that fifteen percent that's left, how much are we assuming that will get done with the measure S funding? Or asked another way, what percentage do we think we'll get to of touching every street by the time that measure S is complete? I don't think we, I have, I can only speculate. I don't think we have an answer to that. I know we're going to try to address as much as we can, but I don't think I can give you a real answer to that. I'm sorry. Okay, no worries. Um, please, please.
So when we were looking at the renewal of measure, uh, measure P meant to become measure S, that was one of the things that was really important that we heard from the community and from the committee, was that we really wanted to get the job done. I think that was the term we used, complete the job. So I would just really urge staff to look really carefully at, at the model and at the, at the project, projected revenue over the next couple of years, and to make that a big priority, to try to, um, uh, fill that gap, complete that last fifteen percent. I think that will put the city in a much better position in two thousand and twenty-six when you go back to the voters and you say, we got the job done. Now we need more, you know, w- we need continuing support so we can maintain the roads at this current, current state. So, thank you.
Um, Ken, this might be a question for, for Hans, um, but can the council director ask the measure P, measure S committee to give us, um, a recommendation on a proposal for what next steps look like in regards to extending the funding? Is that something that the council can request of the committee to, to deliberate on?
Yeah, I, 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 I see why not, yes. And I think, um, Carol, do you remember when measure P, you, you were speaking up and saying we need a continuation of that here in front of council, so yes, we can do that.
Okay, and I don't know if that's something that we can, I don't know if we need a motion on it, or if it's just kind of like a general consensus, maybe from the council, that maybe it'd be helpful to at least begin those dialogues so that we're not, um, butting up against a, a timeframe when it gets to next July. Um, it, it'd be helpful to start having some robust community engagement in regards to what that looks like.
Yes, so, uh, I answered the question already that it has to be, uh, approved in July, uh, July, early August of twenty-six to, to get it on the ballot measure in November twenty-six. Um, but what, what has to happen prior to that is also that we have to discuss with the city council, what, what is the, the roadmap for measure, for the new measure? How would you like to see that? And I, I can see staff already seeing this up probably by the end of twenty-five, early twenty-six, because, um, there are questions that need to be asked. Ie, uh, how do you want to gauge the interest? I remember, uh, we had a measure P, uh, so, um, or we had a committee, uh, consisting out of residents in two thousand and fourteen that discussed what do we want to do, and then they recommended something in two thousand and eighteen, uh, um, Gene Rash was, was on that committee. And, and, uh, they said, no, we want to basically continue to have a tax measure that just continues measure P. Now, uh, that became measure S. When we discuss that, uh, in the next twelve to fifteen months, the question can come uh, also in front of the, the committee that, that you have to name then, uh, because I think that's a very good idea to have a committee, again, to discuss the future of measure PNS. Uh, do we, what, what do we want to add? Do we want to just continue powering through streets, storm drain, ADA improvements? And sidewalks, or do we want to add, add facilities, you know? Okay, is there a different model out there? And, and we had that conversation in two thousand and eighteen where we talked about facilities, and at that time, uh, the, the, uh, committee consisting out of, of residents, um, what was clearly up and said, no, we want to continue what we have, and that's what we have right now. But we have now in twenty-five, uh, a different state in our streets. And I think that is, again, a very appropriate conversation that we need to have, and again, mayor, uh, that should start sometime in twenty-five and, uh, uh, early twenty-six, and then, of course, it, it comes, uh, the, to council, and then it's, of course, no go anymore. Staff, we cannot work on the ballot measure then anymore should the council approve that. And, and then hopefully citizens again carry, carry the water as they did previously. So I'm giving you a little bit of a timeline there, probably end of twenty-five, early twenty-six, where you will, uh, decide, um, uh, who do you want on that committee, subcommittee to evaluate the, uh, potential renewal of the tax measure? They will come back to you with a proposal, and then you will deliberate and, uh, work on the language for the tax measure, and then hopefully, uh, uh, vote on it. And we, we have another successful renewal in November of twenty-six.
Thank you, Hans, for the, uh, for the additional narrative there. It, um, plays well into one of the comments that I was going to make, um, not that you're asking for it, but I'm going to share it anyways. Just my thoughts in regards to whether are potential opportunities. It seems clear that some of the funding should be available or maintained to keep up with the maintenance of, of our streets. That seems pretty simple, basic sidewalks and storm drains. And then, you know, I know this was a big topic when we were looking at extending Measure P with Measure S. But I think it's worthy for us to have a dig deeper and having a conversation around a dig ones policy. And then it seems clear from the presentation as well that I think it was 23 million that we expect in ADA upgrades in the city. So somehow we need to make sure, was I wrong? More outside of that, okay.
Just roadway, right away.
So so I think obviously trying to find a way of refocusing some of that funding in that space so that we can be ADA compliant and making sure that we're addressing the needs of everybody in our community, not just able-bodied individuals. And then I think public facilities to me is, I think there's no question that we need to include that in there. I mean, there's, there are deep infrastructure needs in the city. And I don't see any way around it. In fact, I don't even think doing that is going to be enough to address those facility needs. So I just kind of teeing it up in regards to my thoughts there. Two final thoughts in this question phase. Alleyways, there there was some residents in District Four. And I actually don't even name it, remember the name of the alley. Do you, do you?
So it's in the call day.
Next to Ferrante Park, the ballpark over there.
Yeah, there's one, there's one there as well.
But there's an alleyway there, and I know that staff has gone by recently and cleaned up some of the overgrowth. But I guess my, I'm putting it in a form of a question. That's a city-owned street. So are are we also looking at our alleyways? Or are we just looking at the public right of way that are kind of used more regularly, please?
That was very serendipitous. So good evening, Mayor and council members. Actually, Andrew and myself were just discussing that specific alleyway today. And so we talked about it. I think Andrew came up with a solution, and so we'll move forward with it. It's going to take a little bit of design and it's going to be in the queue. And just like Hawthorne, it's a priority. And then we're also designing that portion of North Fremont. So we'll, we'll get there and alleyways are definitely on our schedule.
Awesome, beautiful, thank you. So I think that's a good update for for you to pass along. Yeah, absolutely. And then my 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 last question here. So there's a portion, and I've brought this up before as it relates to priority projects for NCIP. But given that Measure P Measure S funding could be used for sidewalks as well, there's that portion on Mark Thomas Drive between Jocelyn Canyon and Santa Catalina that there's pedestrians can't walk there. And I see people walking on the street all the time or walking up on top of that like embankment that's on the other side of the freeway. And so I know that we're talking about putting a bike path there as well. And I just wonder, as we're looking at designing that space, how we incorporate both pedestrian and bicycle option opportunities there? Because it seems like a high-frequency transit area, particularly for folks that are going to events. Like I see it the most when there are events at the fairgrounds. And there's literally people walking in the street to to get to the other side when there's no pathway there. So I'm not sure if that's possible for us to look at potentially putting in the queue.
Yes, so sorry. We are looking at that. We actually just awarded a contract to a consultant to do preliminary engineering for the NCIP project. So that's early in the process, but we'll be doing some outreach to inform how that path gets laid out. Make sure that we're accommodating both pedestrians and bicyclists. So that's coming.
I love it. Thank you so much for that. Okay, we'll open up for public comments. So anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? Do we have anybody online? I'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have one online, so we'll go ahead and go to our public speaker online.
Go ahead, please, Esther.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to mention that North Fremont fell off the cliff a long time ago and really became extraordinarily apparent when Seaside finished their part of the street that came across Canyon Del Rey and stopped halfway up the block before it got to Casanova, where you can see the exact line where Fremont is on sea, which side is seaside and which is ours. And frankly, I was kind of surprised that with Seaside having taken so much of Car Week over that we would have left that portion, which is an entrance and an exit to our city that is highly used, especially during Car Week, that we left it the way that it looks because it's it's an embarrassment. You know, North Fremont and our side of the city typically does not get prioritized. But this is the border and the entrance to our city. And I don't know how many of you council members have actually gone there and seen the delineation between seaside and us. But it's something that should be, should have been already prioritized. I also wanted to mention, I really, really helped drum up support for these measures for for the roads. And I'm happy that it went through. But I'm a little perturbed to think that we are looking at renewing and renewing and renewing attention on roads when we should be trying to talk about a measure for affordable housing. We need to expand the way that we approach funding. And the roads will be needing maintenance. Of course, we don't want to see it in the position that we have our community centers in that, you know, nobody maintained them for decades. But I I just think that it's important to look at the priorities that the residents have put in as their number one priority in the surveys that you guys have done. And consider doing a measure that addresses that number one priority, which is affordable housing here. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't do an extension or whatever for the the road measures. But I'd like to propose the consideration of expanding the measures away in it, not away from, but adding affordable housing to the measures that are discussed in the future. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any last comments?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Thank you for the hard work that's done by our oversight committee. One of the things that became apparent when we were, I was not on the council, but when Measure P was coming along is that in order for it to pass, there had to be a component of a sunset and there had to be a component of citizen oversight. And so that was very, very clear. And that was the model that was used for Measure S as well as the TAMZ effort with Measure X. So an integral part of that is, I'm not sure what I would want to do in 2026 yet. I want to hear more from the oversight. And I really appreciate all the work that they offer in looking at the numbers. Really appreciate all of the work that's done by Public Works and staff and finance to be able to manage these dollars. These are large, large dollars and large projects that take a lot of engineering time, contracts and oversight. And as we've all learned on the council, anytime you have a public facilities work or a public job where something is being built, repaired, it takes a long time because there's a lot of moving parts. And there's a lot of moving parts in what we've been able to accomplish with Measure P and Measure S. And so we have continuing work. But as I said, I'll hold my opinion in terms of what the next one should look like. But I'll say there should be a next one in some form so that we can continue maintaining our community that has lots of people that drive on it, residents and visitors, and lots and lots of activities. And to raise the bar with the quality in all respects, and whatever we do is important to me. And I will remind everybody as well, when we look to a sales tax, that's not just the community that lives here. But actually, I think the last figure we saw for Measure X was 66% of the tax was actually paid by the visiting public that comes to our community. So let's not forget, we're able to do this because we are a hospitality town and we are a town of wonderful parks and streets and activities and residents that live here. So it's a combination that we we need to recognize. But we do look for the taxing dollar to come from our hospitality visitors. And hopefully that will be in some form for the for the next measure, whether it's Measure Z, whatever the county decides to to give us the number. I'll hopefully be in a position to be able to support it. But I'll hold my framework of what it will look like until I have some more data and some more opinions because I want to hear from the public and I want to hear from the oversight about how we do continue this to make sure that we are judicious with our public dollars in all forms and all things we do. Thank you.
Anybody else? One, two, two, two thoughts. First is that I, I'm, my hope is is that there's a way that we can try to better coordinate with the utilities. And I think, and I know it's hard, I know, and I've talked to to staff about this. We can't control what they do. But I mean, man, Franklin was just redone and they dug right through that. And now it's all wobbly as I go down the hill. And it's not the only place that I experienced that. So I don't know if there's a way for us to be able to dig deeper in regards to coordination with them so that we can somehow figure this out. Anyways, that was kind of it for for requests here. But I will end with immense gratitude for our staff because I know, I mean, look, you're just hearing this from council today. I know that there's things on a regular basis that you're, you all are hearing things from in managing the relationship with multiple stakeholders. And to Ed's point, it's really complex. It's not like this is a private company doing this. This is the public sector where it gets really complicated. So you all are project managers on top of everything else that you do. And it's just greatly appreciated. So you helped us get to where we are today and just immensely grateful for you all. Alrighty, with that, we will go ahead and recess.
we will go ahead and recess.
Recording in progress.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to our evening session. It's today Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, for our regular council meeting. And we'll go ahead and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll ask Councilmember Garcia to kick us off. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. With that, we will continue our general public comments from the afternoon session for anybody who has public comments for items that are not on today's agenda and who hasn't spoken during public comment during the afternoon session. The floor is yours. So we'll start in the chamber. I see one hand. Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak on public comment? All right, we'll check online real quick before we have Bob come up. We'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have one person online, so we'll go to start with Bob in the chambers.
Hello, Mayor, everybody. I want to say Happy Thanksgiving. I just got to say, you guys city folk are just crazy how hard you all work, and I just want to say thank you for the hard work. And the good part is, I see you guys are laughing and having fun up here, but we as citizens really appreciate what you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. It's a nice way to start the meeting.
Come back anytime.
Come back anytime. I second that. All right, we'll go to our public commenter online, please.
Ms. Muffet, go ahead, please.
Yes. Yes, good evening. I just want to let you know I have a timer myself. Imagine living in a country where politicians that decide the fate of the people don't allow the people a voice. Free speech time is a quick two to three minutes and often ignored. Imagine the people eager to participate in matters of importance, but their voices and ideas go unheard and unacted upon. So the society slips into apathy and the public turns away knowing it's hopeless. Imagine living in a country that once had great protections for the environment, but the politicians sidestep them for the convenience of economic growth, growth without water resources, growth at the cost of destroying all heart of society that wants to stand up to corrupt governors bought by developers. Imagine all the natural air conditioners such as trees that could actually reduce climate disasters are cut down like enemies. Welcome to America. Imagine all hope reduced to the calamities that climate change brings, destroyed one by one. Welcome to the USA. Mayor and city council members, you need to be heroes now. You need to stand up for climate change. We had a hurricane this winter and 80 mile per hour winds in Carmel Valley because your development protocol is heating up our bay. Your traffic solutions are not solutions and your mass transit is something no one wants to use unless they have to. We don't have 50 years to lull a gag. You need to be brave and you need to be bold. And for example, when I brought up the suggestion of more three-day parking, you, Mayor, said the city can't give away all city parking, making my suggestions null and void. You turned it into a no discussion instead of the pros and cons of adding a few more three-day parking places so working people don't have to move their cars every two hours, which weighs on employees' time. Same with the storm drains. You know, I just asked that you put grates on the curb side as well. And instead, Mayor, you said, well, you suggest this, which I publicly did. Instead, you brushed it aside as something I Instead, you brushed it aside as something I should suggest. I suggest you listen and act upon suggestions the public cares about as city councils did in the past. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and close general public comment. And we will adjourn to the joint special meeting with the planning commission and I'll ask Clementine to do a roll call of the planning commissioners, please.
Commissioner Brassfield. And Commissioner Dawson. Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Present.
Vice Chair Silva.
Here.
And Chair Bluth.
Here.
And just a friendly reminder to make sure your microphones are on for the discussions. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Clementine, and welcome, Planning Commission. Glad to be here with you all again. We're going to go ahead and pass it to Hans for staff introduction for the presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a a follow-up item after the housing element was uh certified by HCD when you adopted the housing element in July, we shared with you that there is a lot of work still to be done even after the certification and tonight, there are a few of those items that are coming out of the Housing Action Plan that we have to present to you and hopefully that you and the Planning Commission together um will forward those various items that Levi Hill or Planning Manager will now present.
Thank you, Hans, and we'll get just a moment to get the slides pulled up. Perfect. Thank you, Hans. And yes, as mentioned, we are pleased to be bringing forward the first phase of implementation measures associated with the uh housing element that was adopted earlier this year. Uh, so as you see, this is the joint PC uh city council meeting, so from a procedure standpoint, we'll be providing a staff presentation and then taking commissioner and council questions, initial questions, and then breaking for public comment before adjourning to the uh special meeting of the Planning Commission. Uh, we'll get started. So of course, the recommendation uh from staff is that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions that recommend that the city council accept the planning office, seek with determination, approve the various amendments to the specific plans in the North Fremont Downtown and Lighthouse specific plans, and approve amendments to Chapter 38 of the Monterey City Code, which is the zoning ordinance and rezone properties consistent with the six-cycle housing element. And then, of course, for the council, the uh recommendation is to uh uh consider the recommendations from the Planning Commission and adopt the necessary resolutions to amend the specific plans and accept the secret determination from the planning office and adopt the necessary ordinance to implement the rezonings that are proposed in the attachments. So just an overview of why we're here and uh what our objective is with these proposed changes and and the primary objective is to uh ensure that the city maintains our compliance with state law specific to housing element, both in terms of what we're required to do to uh identify the sites to accommodate our arena allocation and then also meeting the statutory timeframe in which we have to make those amendments. And that is where we're here today. So just a quick refresher on uh what I think most everyone in this room is aware of, but the housing element was adopted by the city council in July and then received certification from the state uh later in the year and on October 4th. And uh that housing element, as you're all aware, identified the locations for our future development and identified our opportunity zones and opportunity sites that we would accommodate our arena of 3,654 units. And then, of course, also uh contained a series of goals, programs, and policy changes that would also facilitate the accommodation of that arena allocation. And then always uh looking to remove barriers to development, both governmental and non-governmental. So specifically, what this first phase aims to do is to implement a a series of zoning changes, both with site-specific rezonings and then also program changes and policy changes that would help the city accommodate what is known as arena shortfall. And that's what's identified on this graphic here. And so that table is a little hard to see, but what it is, is the entire rundown of what our arena and how it's being achieved. And in that red box is uh is what is called the shortfall. And these are uh, this is, and that's identified 1,772 units. And these are the units that were found to not be accommodated under the city's current zoning and would require rezonings in order to allow those densities. And that's what we're doing here and that's what we're required to do before the statutory deadline of December 15th of this year. So how we get there is all covered in uh the Housing Action Plan component of the housing element. And uh as we touched on earlier, it describes those specific goals and policies and is fairly specific as to what actual actions the city is going to take to implement these changes and to accommodate our arena shortfall. And uh it included a total of 53 programs to be completed in the eight-year planning cycle. Uh, and most of these programs will require at some level council action. Um, so this is that first phase and and what is required to be done uh prior to December 15th, but will not be the last phase of implementation measures that comes before the council in the eight-year planning period, just just the first. So these are the programs shown on the slide, what's uh what's being proposed currently in this first phase, and it's the implementation of of these programs noted here, and we'll get into each one of these in more specific detail uh in just a moment, but uh in total, it's a it's a total of six different programs from our Housing Action Plan that are being implemented with this uh with the proposed amendments. So we'll start with talking about the multifamily residential overlay and then we'll talk a little bit about what the proposed amendments are to the overlay. But uh this this map here shows the existing overlay that was established in 2019. Uh, and the goal of that overlay was to permit the conversion of existing commercial and office uh buildings into residential buildings and also allow new residential development at densities of 30 dwelling units per acre. And it was isolated uh primarily to the south side of Garden Road uh as noted here. So under Program 1B, there's a series of amendments to the multifamily residential overlay that is being brought forward. Uh, and the one of the primary changes that's being proposed is the increase from 30 dwelling units to 60 dwelling units per acre density. And then uh another primary change is to expand the overlay area to cover other areas of the city, and we'll get into that in just a moment. Uh, and then establish objective uh development and design standards for each one of those areas, given that they have different contexts of development patterns and surrounding property uh land uses. And then in certain instances, it will allow for administrative approval of projects when certain affordability requirements are met. So as I noted, it will establish three uh distinct uh subsections or multifamily overlay zones as we've been referring to them. Uh, the first is essentially the same as what we have as the existing multifamily overlay, and it's really just to submit and and call out the uniqueness of the this site as opposed to the other overlay zones and doesn't actually add any additional properties along Garden Road. It's the same size there uh exists today. Uh, but what it does do is change the permitted density from 30 dwelling units to 60 dwelling units per acre. Uh, allows the maximum heights remain at 35 feet and continues to prohibit mixed-use development. The MF2 zone, this is a a new zone of multifamily residential overlay that's being proposed, and this is being applied to the Pacific Munrus Cass area of the city. Uh, it was identified in the housing element as an opportunity zone and has been uh further reduced in size uh as far as geographic uh area uh because we did uh in the development of this overlay, we removed all the R1 properties, VAF properties and open space properties. So where you see holes there is usually is probably representative of VAF properties or R1 zone properties. And I'll also note it also omitted uh historically designated properties as well. And uh this would allow also density of 60 dwelling units per acre, uh maximum building heights of 45 feet. And this would actually allow mixed use because the underlying zoning for these properties are are commercial rather than industrial like we see on the Garden Road sites. And the third overlay zone is the MF3 zone, and this is uh covering the county courthouse site, which you may remember was identified as an opportunity site in the housing element. Uh, and also implements the uh the goals of Program 1L, which is to apply the uh R3 base zoning to the site. It's currently zoned R1, so that would be an upzone from R1 to R3, and then also applies the multifamily overlay, which would further increase the allowed density to 60 dwelling units per acre. And also within that includes objective design standards for the site uh and including maximum and building heights of 45 feet. And given the site's context, we also opted to prohibit mixed-use development on this site as well. I'll note that we did receive a comment letter from the Naval Support uh activity pertaining to this overlay zone and this overlay site, and we did coordinate with them in the development of the development standards for the site and incorporated many of the uh suggestions that they were recommending in their comment letter uh have already been incorporated into the proposed ordinance. Uh, the ones that weren't had to do with uh procedural recommendations that we felt may conflict with the state law uh requirements for how we process and approve these projects. And then that takes us to the next program that's being implemented, which is Program 1C. And this covers focused specific plan updates and uh really proposes a series of amendments to the uh North Fremont Lighthouse and Downtown specific plans to facilitate the projected build-out that we included in the housing element. And uh it also uh in certain instances uh allows for administrative approval of qualifying qualifying projects in the North Fremont specific plan only uh whenever certain criteria for affordability is being met. So we'll start with the North Fremont specific plan. The primary change is the increase in density from 30 dwelling units to 60 dwelling units per acre. Uh, increase maximum height from 35 feet to 45 feet in certain areas. Some areas will remain as is, and then there's further height restrictions as identified in the airport safety zones. Uh, so there's not really any changes that are being proposed to permitted heights in the airport safety zones uh beyond what would be approved by the ALUC. And then it also reduces the minimum parking requirement for residential uses from 1.5 spaces per unit to one space per unit.
While you're on this slide, is the the land use zones, it says zone three there inside those yellow lines?
That's correct. Those are depicting the airport safety zones two and three. And then we get to the downtown specific plan proposed amendments, and and really this is isolated primarily to just the Alvarado District, in which, if you recall, uh, we are increasing uh heights from four stories to five stories. Uh, and then it also incorporates some additional incentives that uh build upon the state density bonus uh provisions and then a proposed local density bonus that we'll get into a little bit later because it's actually implementing a a different program. And then as far as the Lighthouse specific plan goes, the the really the only change that's being proposed is to uh change to the land use table to allow 100% residential developments. Uh, the primary change with that uh land use table change would be to to allow ground floor residential, which is currently not allowed in the Lighthouse specific plan. And then it also includes a provision to allow shared parking agreements on city-owned lots and garages when parking uh is available and whenever the project meets certain affordability criteria. And then we'll get into Program 2A, and this is uh the establishment of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Overlay District. And uh this one is a a new overlay district that is being applied to seven properties, and it's really being applied as a tracking mechanism for staff. Uh, there's state law provisions that require that if a site was included on two of the previous housing element inventories and continues to be included on housing element inventories, that you have to allow uh ministerial processing of project applications on those sites. Um, so really, the the purpose of this overlay district is for a tracking mechanism for staff to ensure that these site, that that this requirement is being met and that we're compliant with state law. And it applies to the seven properties you see included on that table. Interestingly enough, out of that seven, four of those properties are also included in the overlay districts or the specific plan area sort of kind of already captured. And then uh Programs 2F and 3C um have to do with the the density bonus ordinance that the state has and the uh existing or that the city has. There is an existing density bonus ordinance that was adopted in 2016, but the state uh legislature updates density bonus provisions at the state level almost yearly. Uh, meaning that ours uh is not completely consistent with state law. So the proposed amendments would incorporate those requirements of state law, bringing us fully consistent with what their requirements are. And then it also establishes a uh a subsection within the density bonus ordinance that would uh establish a local density bonus that goes above and beyond what's given through the state density bonus program for certain qualifying projects when they meet uh either certain affordability levels or whenever they're providing a certain mix of bedroom counts, if you recall that conversation, whenever uh we were adopting the housing element. And that's the uh implementation of Programs 2F and 3C. So environmental review, if you recall, there is a very lengthy environmental impact report that was prepared for the uh Monterey 2031 um uh general plan update. And that was certified at the same meeting that the uh housing element was adopted. And what that document did was it described and disclosed all the impacts that were associated with the full build-out and implementation of the general plan update, including the six-cycle housing element. So uh in uh an abundance of caution, what staff uh opted to do was prepare a a full uh secret review environmental checklist that evaluated each environmental category in terms of uh the if they're looking for if there is a change of condition from whenever this uh council adopted that EIR in July to now, whenever we're implementing the programs. And what it looks at is specifically if there is a change of circumstances, uh project changes that were not uh evaluated at the programmatic level whenever the EIR was considered or if there was new information or substantial of substantial importance that was uh not uh made aware at the time the original EIR was being considered. So after going through that complete checklist and doing that analysis, it was determined that the proposed project is fully consistent and within the scope of the Monterey 2031 EIR and that no further analysis is required. And just to recap, as we kind of started out, what our objectives are in the analysis for the proposed amendments is just to ensure that the city remains and uh in compliance with state law and maintains our our good standing with the state of California through the eight-year planning period. And that we meet those specific requirements that uh the state places on cities when it uh as it pertains to housing element law and that we can maintain compliance as we submit our uh annual progress reports to the state showing uh the actions that are being taken to uh implement the housing element. And of course, to meet our statutory time limits of getting these rezonings to account for our arena shortfall before December 15th of this year. And with that, we'll recap the recommendations is that the Planning Commission uh hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions that uh recommend the council accept the secret determination, uh adopt the amendments to the specific plans and approve the necessary amendments to Chapter 38 and rezoning of properties. And then, of course, the recommendation for city council is to consider those uh recommendations of the Planning Commission, accept this off uh planning officer's secret determination, adopt the necessary resolutions to amend the specific plans and adopt the necessary ordinances to amend Chapter 38 of the Monterey City Code. And that concludes my presentation. Um, as noted earlier, I'll take uh questions from both commission and the council before we take public comment and then adjourn to the special meeting of the Planning Commission.
All right, wonderful presentation. Thank you for that. It was um detailed, but also somewhat brief. So appreciate the the balance there and and
And if there's any questions, we can get as much into the details.
Absolutely. Okay, well, let's start with the planning commission. Let's just start at the end, work our way down, and then we can do the same with the council. So.
No questions.
Okay, we're off to a good start.
Okay, I do have a few questions. Um, thanks, Levi. Good presentation as usual. So the uh it seemed to me there was a part of the previous um housing element that included this uh this huge um uh portion of it in Ryan Ranch. What happened to that?
Yes, that's a great question. So uh the area that covers, uh, you know, the four-door properties and that area along Highway 68, all those sites were identified not necessarily to accommodate the arena allocation of 3,654 units, but to provide the necessary and required buffer. So as uh as we go through the eight-year planning period, if properties are underdeveloped or um and and there you have to maintain a buffer showing that where you can still accommodate the proposed units uh that 3,654 elsewhere in the city. So uh that is uh still on the uh the Housing Action Plan to come forward uh to uh essentially develop a specific plan for that area and rezone those properties. They're just not required to be done at this time and prior to that December 15th date. But they are going to be uh required to happen prior to the end of the eight-year planning cycle.
Okay, thank you. And then uh you you hear a lot about uh builders remedy um projects, especially up in the Bay Area where people are actually finding those properties and those um sort of loopholes.
Where people are actually finding those properties and those sort of loopholes to to build projects in this case without planning review, really just going right into the building department. So can you talk about this statutory deadline? And where we stand in terms of, because there is some water coming from the water district, I understand. And so, you know, where do we stand in terms of builder remedy vulnerability?
Yeah, excellent question. So builders remedy is only applicable to cities that are found to not have a certified housing element. Or found to be out of compliance in terms of what the requirements are for a housing element from the state department of housing and community development. So where we stand right now is we have a certified and adopted housing element that has been found to be in compliance by the state of California. So we are not subject to builders remedy at this time. And so long as we maintain compliance with the state law and maintain our good standing with the with HCD, we will not be subject to builders remedy.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to comment and ask a question about the letters that were sent in prior to the meeting. Thanks to Monterey Bay Economic Partnership and the Revision West and Monterey Transit Authority for their support. The letter from the US Navy, it seemed like the principal issue was a 50 foot setback between the new development and the current residential community. Is that something that has been talked about with the Navy?
It has, and we did incorporate that recommendation into the development standards for that MF3 overlay zone.
Okay. And then the other letter that was very long covering quite a bit of detail over the specific plans. It seems like the main issue was does the city charter permit converting visitor accommodation facilities to housing and homeless shelters?
Yes, yes, we did look through that letter and I agree that just seemed to be the primary concern that was raised in that letter. And thank you for asking that question. I think it's important to note that out of all the changes that are being proposed, whether it be the rezoning amendments or the specific plan amendments. None of those alter or affect properties that are zoned to VAF. As you know, the charter is what regulates development on VAF properties and the charter is required to be would be required to be amended to change permitted land uses on VAF or rezone properties to VAF.
That's great. You know, people take a lot of time and trouble to write these letters. And so this is really nice that they've been addressed and dealt with.
Yeah, and I'll just on that note, I think there was some other in that letter concerns raised that pertain to airport safety zones allowances of heights. And I'll know as previously noted earlier, the there are no heights being increases being proposed in airport safety zones two or three. And there is still very much a requirement for anything going above what those permitted heights. The requirement still exists to get approval from the airport land use commission before moving forward with those developments. And I think there was also in that letter, there seemed to be an overarching concern of the impact of VAF properties and whether or not they could be converted to residential uses. And that would not be allowed under the proposed amendments. As I said earlier, the VAF properties are limited to principally permitted uses of visitor accommodation facilities.
Good to know. Yeah.
Thank you, Levi. That was a very good brief presentation.
Thank you.
And thorough. Couple of questions regarding the overlay district, the MF1, two and three. The slides indicated that there would be objective standards for one and three, but I didn't notice that there would be such for two. Can you clarify that?
Yes, there would definitely, there is a very comprehensive set of development standards for each of the individual zones. There's also a fourth set of standards that applies to all three zones. So there is a set of development standards that does apply to MF2.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking specifically about the objective standards that would be applicable.
Yes, there would be applicable standards to to all of the MF overlay. And then there is also a distinct section that's only applicable to the MF2.
I see. What would the process and timeline be for establishing these standards and?
So many of the ones that are being proposed are included in the ordinance today. So they're actually would be adopted with the zoning amendments that are being proposed today.
Okay, you also mentioned that MF1, the base owning was primarily industrial and not commercial. Yet there are indeed a lot of commercial uses there. How does that square with the industrial zone district?
Yeah, so a lot of our industrial zones not only permit more heavy or intense industrial uses, but they also lots of times will permit lesser intensity uses like commercial uses that are sometimes. So what you see there is where there's just a higher demand for commercial uses that are also allowed in those industrial zones. But the where we're coming from, I'm not allowing mixed uses, that there is the potential that there is permitted uses that are of industrial nature. That are still allowed on in that area that we did have concerns about mixing that with residential development.
So it's primarily zoned industrial currently, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Regarding the Alvarado district, there was a part of your presentation indicated that there would be a local density bonus above and beyond the state density bonus. Can you go into more detail about what that might entail?
Sure. I can pull up the specific numbers, but in general, the incentives are based around, I think it's an increase of 10% density. And that goes beyond what's already allowed under the state density bonus. So and that's a sliding scale based on the amount of affordability and the number of affordable units that's being provided. So it's kind of hard to hypothetically describe what what a project could see. But under our pretty much our standard inclusionary requirement, what the anticipated state density bonus allowance is roughly about 15% increase in density. And then beyond that would be a local density bonus that would allow for an additional 10% of density if meeting certain criteria. And that certain criteria is, I believe it's 75% two and three bedroom mix of units. Or if it meets a certain threshold of moderate level affordability, which is was identified in our housing element of a gap as where as far as where we're going to make up for the that the units in the moderate affordable category. So it's really targeting the the moderate affordable level. And then also targeting the mixture of two and three bedroom family units that that was a big topic when we.
Would there be any incentives for further reductions of the parking? You know, the state has a minimum parking requirement, which we dealt separately with the lighthouse district, but not the Alvarado, right?
Correct. So there's already not a parking requirement. If you recall, we did do it, we the downtown specific plan amendment shortly after we adopted the housing element eliminated the parking requirement for the entire downtown specific plan area. Now, obviously, what you're describing state density bonus applies to areas of the city outside of that, the downtown specific plan. And state density bonus law actually allows for developments to move forward with one parking space per unit already. Which is a reduction from a lot of parking requirements throughout the city. But in a lot of the changes we're doing, we're also dropping our parking requirement to either match that one space per unit. Or to even reduce it further to eliminate the parking requirement.
Thank you, Levi. That's all I have.
Thanks, Levi. Just to follow up on Terry's question. The building remedy, however, the state's going to be assessing our ability to meet our housing element goals. How is that going to play into our water deficit? And what's your impression from the state and how they're going to assess the two different issues? Where the we have the cease and desist order and then we have the ability for people to come in and take advantage of some of the new rules. Even though water might be a big impact and that having a positive effect.
Yeah, it's a great question. And there was definitely a topic that staff discussed with HCD staff throughout the development of the housing element throughout the review. And it was definitely something they were cognizant of. I think there where they're coming from is there the anticipation that at some point water will come online in a more substantial amount. I will say that the city's obligation as it pertains to our housing element is to plan for our arena allocation. We are not necessarily obligated to build those units because obviously that's a lot of a lot of those things factors are outside of the city's control. What the city is obligated to do is identify the sites and that are zoned appropriately to accommodate and allow those units. And then also demonstrate a where we're reducing the barriers to developments actually being built and on those sites. And so that's where the housing action plan comes into play. It's kind of the twofold. So we're not necessarily required to build them. The state does want to see legitimate and sincere intent to allow for the development and construction of these units. But we're not necessarily going to be punished if, you know, year five rolls around and we have not accommodated all of our or built all of our units. So long as we can still continue to demonstrate that our zoning allows for that level of development, then we should be found in compliance. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you very much. So I had a couple of questions on the presentation where you had a slide and I don't remember exactly what it was, but the state required when there were properties that are vacant, commercial properties. What is that called again?
Yeah, that's our regional housing needs assessment overlay district.
Okay, the overlay district. So could you explain what it means if those properties become subject to that? What does it mean in the administrational handling of that property? If there's an applicant, what does that actually practically mean?
Right. So specific to those sites, there's provisions of state law. Well, thank you now. So as you see on the third bullet point there, it's government code section 65583. And basically that section of state law requires that any site that is being rezoned to accommodate arena shortfall. So that's that 1772 unit number. That's also being identified to accommodate a lower or very low income affordability level. We have to permit those developments administratively or ministerially. So that means no discretionary review involved. So that's only subject to the objective development standards that have been applied to that site. And then otherwise, we have to have a ministerial review and approval process for for any of those sites. So not just this overlay, but there's portions of the North Fremont specific plan that will have this provision. They're meeting the affordability requirements. And then there's portions of within this overlay that are also meeting that. So it does require them to provide 20% of their units to low or very low income levels to qualify for that ministerial approval process.
So by saying ministerial, it means that it bypasses?
No planning commission, no discretionary body, correct?
Okay.
If it meets all of our objective standards and also meets the affordability requirements.
Okay. And also, when you were talking about North Fremont, if you could go back to that slide. In the North Fremont area, we already have a specific design approved plan. So if I'm catching the changes on what we're proposing there is that there's a height difference going from 35 to 45. Unless it's the property that's closer to the freeway, which could go to 50.
That's correct.
Have I caught? And that's the only change in the North Fremont?
The change in density as well. So 30 to 60, I think is the other primary change. We do have reduced parking kind of falling in line with that state law of state density bonus of the one one space per unit ratio. So we're also making that change. And then there's a series of I we what we refer to as height buffer zones. So these are areas. So as you noted, we're changing the permitted height to, you know, 35 to 45 feet generally. But there are certain areas that will have further restrictions to height and they're kind of, you see those red lines and those different colorations on the map. And that's representing areas that are either adjacent to R1 properties or R3 where we felt we needed to put standards in for an appropriate transition to the more intense development along the corridor. So those heights will be limited to like, if you're adjacent within 15 feet of R1 property, you're you're limited to 25 feet in height until you're beyond a certain distance. So.
So and I noticed the 25 foot was on Bruce Lane as an example.
Correct.
Do we have other areas that are designated or will that come back to us as we do an official amendment of the North Fremont specific?
So so that would be, so when you say designated, do you mean in terms of that permitted density or the height?
So so when you were talking about 25 feet in height, Bruce Lane is one of those locations. So I guess it's a two part question. Are there other locations in North Fremont? When they are surrounding an R1 that is limited to a height of 25 feet?
There is. Now, I don't know if you can zoom into the the image and kind of the portion more to the right. Perfect. So you see the there's some hatching on the northern boundaries there. So those are other areas that are designated as a height buffer zones that are adjacent to either R1 properties or R3.
Okay, okay, good. The other part of the question is, is this one of those that it comes back to the council? For a future amendment to what's currently the North Fremont specific plans?
That that is that is included in the packet tonight. So that action would be happening. These amendments would take would be go into effect if approved tonight. Any future amendments to the North Fremont specific plan that's not been covered tonight would or in the packet or in the attachments that are included would have to come back to the planning commission and council though.
Okay, thank you. And then also let me catch my note here.
Ask a quick question on this while we're on that slide. Sorry, now I should have said something before you took it down. So the the Bruce Lane section that's in red. There's the 2200 North Fremont project. And just taking that as an example. Would that project be impacted by the limitation with that because it's on North Fremont? So how does that work if it if it goes to both streets?
Yeah, so most of those lots are pretty deep. So that the drawing there is not 100% to scale, but is a pretty close approximation. So the furthest a project, a property would be impacted is within 25 feet of that property line along Bruce Lane. So most of the property developments that we see are locating their parking in the rear. So it really doesn't impact too much of building heights. I'm aware of the project you're talking about and that it it would still be permitted under even with these height restrictions. And yeah, we didn't want to be overly restrictive, but still wanted to allow for that transition to take place.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So if we could go to the area where you were talking about Pacific Monras and Cass. If you had the a map that that covered that.
There you go.
Yes. So one of the things I think you covered was R1s are exempt. There's a maximum height of 45 feet. And its mixed use will now be allowed. But I think you said something about historical properties.
Yes.
So how do you qualify for that? Is that recorded properties that are actually registered historical? Or is it in the application process where someone is identifying the property as historical? So so how do we manage the labeling of historical for this particular MF3, MF2?
It's a great question and it's kind of both. So what was omitted today were properties that were already designated or zoned either under H1 or H2, which is the city's historic zoning designators. So if you see kind of right there, that kind of big island right there in the to the to the left of the overlay, that's a that's a H, I believe in H2 zoned property. So that's why, you know, that's an example of one that's been omitted, right? Kind of in the middle of the overlay area. The other part of your question, I think touches on properties that are maybe potentially historically eligible, but not designated. And those are still included in the overlay, but based on our historic ordinance in the city code would still require to be evaluated based on the Secretary of Interior standards for historic significance before any development could go forward there. That's still a requirement of sequels that we ensure that there's no adverse impacts to historical resources. So what we did is we went ahead and we surgically kind of removed the ones that already have that designation today. But we do acknowledge that there's properties that from an age standpoint will still be technically historically eligible. And would have to be further evaluated to be determined ineligible before it could be redeveloped or demolished or altered.
Okay, okay, great. I think that's the only questions I have right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. So starting with the downtown property, the downtown on specifics, when they talk about the four stories to five stories. Is there a maximum number of five stories that would be permitted? to meet the reigning numbers that without basically impacting the, the actual community?
So that is an excellent question. So the, the overall base height restriction is going to be set at five stories. There are additional incentives or concessions that are allowed through state density bonus as well as the local density bonus that will allow under certain instances for developments to go higher than that. That's already a provision allowed in state law. Essentially they can use a certain number of what they, what they call concessions. And that's where they're able to choose specific development standards that they are not going to comply with. And that's allowed under state law. And they can do that up to a point that allows them to achieve whatever that maximum allowed density is. So to answer your question, there's not a firm number as far as in feet or in stories necessarily. If, if a, for a project to, to really be held to. What it is, is we, they, they cannot go any higher than what's absolutely necessary to achieve the maximum density that's allowed under the permitted zoning and the state density bonus density.
Okay. So within this area though of the, I think this is specifically to the Alvarado district. Is there, if you had so many applications that came in that were, were, that met the qualifications and were looking at five story, is there a maximum to that?
Oh, like a maximum amount of unit of developments that could go above for up to that? No, there's not, not established. No.
Okay. Secondly, in the Lighthouse District. Can you address any type of safety or evacuation issues that might impact some of the changes that you're trying to pass tonight?
Sure. So a, as we mentioned earlier, the, the project was found to be consistent and fully within the scope of the previously certified EIR. And if you recall in that EIR, there was a lot of impacts that were found to be less than significant. There was a lot of impacts that were found to be less, less than significant with the application of mitigation measures. And then there was a series of impacts that was found to be significant and unavoidable. And evacuation was one of those impacts that was recognized and disclosed in the EIR as being significant and unavoidable due to the restricted access to portions of the city, specifically the new Monterey Lighthouse area. Now that was, so that was identified at the time of that EIR was prepared. And, and the implementation of what's being proposed tonight is still within the scope of what was analyzed at that time. So essentially that impact was found to be significant and unavoidable at the time of the adoption of the EIR and it continues to be significant and unavoidable today. Even under the, with the proposed changes and would likely be found to be unsatisfactory under the current build out of the area, to be frank.
Okay. So would our evacuation plan change because of these changes tonight?
So we have a series of mitigation measures that were already incorporated whenever we adopted the EIR. So a lot of those have to do with adaptive signals, the, and in the instance of emergencies, things that can be changed to, change the direction and flow of traffic. Where we found an issue with getting that, even with the application of those mitigation measures getting us to a level of less than significant was how those evacuation routes interact with state controlled highways. And because we don't have control over those state highways, we, we could not with, we could not guarantee that we would be able to fully implement those mitigation measures on those portions of the evacuation route. So that's why it remains significant and unavoidable. So our evacuation plan or has been essentially included, is included with those mitigation measures. So there are measures being taken to address it. It's just due to that relationship with the state controlled roadways. It remains significant and unavoidable.
Okay. And then I have one more question. So the shared parking that you're talking about specifically in the Lighthouse area. And we're already talking about the safety and evacuations being something that is significant and unavoidable. But with the shared parking, has it been in, taken into consideration dealing with tourists, being a high tourist area that if there's increased tourism, tourism in that area about the shared parking and how that would actually impact the people who actually live there or work there?
Certainly. And that's, and that's a provision that's set up to provide just an alternative means for satisfying the parking. The Lighthouse specific plan actually doesn't have a, a parking requirement. So it's not anticipated that this is something that's going to be necessary for developments to, you know, meet a requirement to get permitted. It's kind of an above and beyond measure if a development wanted to provide parking. But to your point, that would always, there would always be the caveat there that is based around the parking availability in city garages and lots. And we would defer to the parking superintendent to make that call of whether or not there was sufficient available spots in those garages or lots before entering into any shared parking agreement.
And then if they didn't enter into that agreement, it still wouldn't be any type of of delay in having that development or?
No, because it's not actually a requirement for the parking. It would just be if a development wanted to still provide parking, which we do see. There's a market demand for, for developments to still provide parking, even when there's, it's not required. It would just be an, a route that in which they could maybe get there if there was sufficient parking available in, in a surrounding area. And there's also locational requirements. It would have to be within a certain distance of those parking garages and lots to, to meet that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hi Levi, thanks for the presentation. Just one question. And this one's relating to Garden Road. I saw the overlay covers only the south side of Garden Road. Why not the north side?
We start to get into the airport safety zones on that north side and they, it's very restricted to density and types of development.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
I have a comment that I'll hold for later. No questions at this time.
Okay.
I'm wondering if what I think would be helpful is to have some kind of like policy roadmap or some kind of tracker. So that as we're implementing these, the public can kind of keep track of what's being accomplished, what's still left to do. Maybe identifying when the anticipated date is of implementation of those policies. Is that something that we could potentially look at doing?
Yes. Actually, we were talking about that earlier today.
Great. Take a leg.
Yes, it's, that's definitely something on our radar. We already are going to be preparing our annual progress reports that we are required by law to submit to the state. That's a more comprehensive look at the eight-year planning cycle where we're at with our housing element. And so year over year requirement. But in the intermediary, we were going to set up a have your say Monterey page. Now that we're kind of, we've reached completion of the adoption of the housing element, kind of transitioning away from that portion of the project into implementation and continue to track our progress along that have your say Monterey page and make that available to the public.
Beautiful. And then I remember when we were going to approve the housing element, there was discussion around six stories in downtown. So how does the four to five that's in the approval for today? How, how does that compare to, to what we discussed about six stories in downtown?
Yeah. Great question. So the conversation around the six stories or five stories, that was all pertaining to language that was being placed into the local density bonus program. And so that got adopted in the adopted form and then went upon review from the state HCD. They wanted to further talk about what the specific language is. So the adopted housing element, the program language specified six stories. HCD wanted to create a little bit more flexibility to allow to fall in line with that state density bonus law that allows for developments to go higher than that, actually through the concessions to meet that maximum density. So it was through coordination and through their review that they actually wanted to stay silent on an actual number when it came to residential developments and wanted to just place language in the specified heights allowed that would permit the maximum allowed density for those sites. So the certified document actually doesn't reference the six stories based on that feedback from HCD.
So maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing something. Why? So then why do we identify five?
Because some projects won't qualify for that additional height based on the affordability levels that they may be providing. And some may, for instance, may need to use a concession for a different development standard rather than the height. Say for either a setback or a lot coverage or something like that. So there is a, a still value and having a height restriction because it still allows for limitations on the, the intensity of the development. So that you're not necessarily removing all your rules because you always have to remember under state density bonus, certain developments will already be able to remove some of your rules. So you want to kind of make those developments choose which rules they're going to remove and then they have to comply with the remaining.
Okay.
Flavors mud.
I understand. I got it.
Well, I, I understand it, but it's like.
No, no, for sure. Can you describe more about, so we have the buffer zone, the buffer, the, the zoning that falls into the buffer that we have in, in the housing element. What, what actually triggers us saying that we have to, have to start looking at those units? Yeah. Can you describe what, what that looks like? At a certain point, how do we know? So we do the, the program changes, we implement all those. If we implement all those, does that preclude us from having to go into the buffer? Or is there something that happens along the way that says, hey, doesn't like housing is going to be developed in these areas, even though we did the rezone? Could you describe that a little bit more?
Sure. That's a great question. And, and what's referred to commonly in a housing element world is, is the no net loss provision. So essentially the whole goal of the housing element is to show for a city to demonstrate how they can accommodate their arena allocation. And the requirement is on the cities to continually be able to demonstrate that you can accommodate that allocation. So what would happen that would push us into that buffer area and, and being able to rezone or show that we can build out there is, would be the underdevelopment of sites. So where that could happen is where on our housing element, if we projected 200 units on a site and it ended up developing at a density of a hundred units, you know, depending on where we had left in the city. We are now having to demonstrate where we can make up that additional hundred units elsewhere in the city and still meet our full three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four units. It, it's going to be, it's a math problem essentially as properties start to develop. We really start to have to watch if they're underdeveloping and whether or not we're still able to say we can accommodate all those units under our existing zoning or do we need to break into the buffer?
But the, but the, if, if, if a site that is rezoned isn't developed, then that doesn't, it doesn't.
We still can say it can accommodate those units if someone were to develop.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for answering all those questions. You did a phenomenal job. I have to say the presentation and then the response to the questions, you're, you're clearly an expert in your craft. So thank you Levi for taking the time to do that. We're going to now open it up for public. Oh, no. Yes. Sorry. There's the joint, there's a joint session here. So I questioned myself, but staff gave me a cheat sheet. So I know what I'm doing. We are going to open up to public comments. We're going to start in the chamber. If anybody wants to speak on this item. What, and just for folks that maybe don't come to all of our council meetings, we identify everybody upfront. And then we close off the opportunity for folks to be able to speak during public comment. And then we allow all those individuals to speak. So once we do that cutoff, nobody else will be able to have the opportunity to jump in. So I'll start in the chamber. If there's anybody that wishes to speak on this item, I ask that you either stand up to the left of the podium or identify yourself by raising your hand. We have one hand raised. We have two folks standing. Gabe? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. Just sort of call you out. Everybody give it up. No, I'm just kidding. All right. Let's check online. We'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have one person on Zoom. So we have three standing in the chamber and one sitting. So we have four and five. We're going to go ahead and start with Gene in the chamber. Take it away, Gene.
Hi, Gene Rush. I have three questions. I don't know whether you'll be able to answer them or maybe in discussions, but sometimes the government code combines references to lower income accommodations and they'll say low or very low. But doesn't that language predicate that we end up with too few very low units and wouldn't, isn't that somewhat detrimental? Don't we want to protect some of our very low income apartments? So that's one question. And then in the, in the pressure to demonstrate that we're accommodating to these arena demands, it wouldn't be so intense that we would have to politically support a particular water system, would it? I mean, that would be rather draconian, but I'm just asking about the water question. And then the density bonus that you were talking about so beautifully. That really is a math formula. That's really just saying that we want to try to get the most people in the space that we have. And therefore we have a preference, a built-in mathematical preference for two and three bedroom homes, again, as opposed to very small, very low income, maybe studio, small studio units. And that's just the math of it. That's not a, a moral statement. It's just space, right?
Hi, my name is Laura Davis. I'm the deputy director of Land Watch and I will be providing comments on Land Watch's behalf. Land Watch is encouraged by the city's efforts to promptly implement the policies and programs provided under its recently approved housing element. Key to addressing housing crisis is reducing the cost of housing production by making it easier for developers to build more housing that meets the needs of local working families. Tonight, the city council is considering a number of important, specific steps for making housing easier and more affordable by design. Housing that is denser in city centers, near resources and near public transportation. Policies that expand the multifamily residential overlay, increased density and building heights, reduce parking requirements and allow ministerial permitting where affordable housing is included are key to alleviating the housing shortage. Land Watch commends staff for having a clear plan with timelines for implementing the housing element programs. We encourage the planning commission and the city council to follow staff's recommendation by determining that the proposed actions are consistent with the general plan EIR and by amending the land use regulations and development standards for the specified areas. We also encourage the city council to amend the Monterey city code to create a regional housing needs assessment overlay district to comply with state density bonus law and to establish development incentives. Finally, we support amending the regulation and development standards of the multifamily residential overlay district, amending the architectural review procedures and zoning for higher density on certain specified parcels. By taking these actions, the city council will follow through on its commitment to promote housing development and to alleviate the housing crisis. It will also be setting an example for other local jurisdictions. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I am Gabe Sanders. I'm the executive director of the Opportunity Housing Trust. We are a 501(c)(3). Recently found to be tax exempt by the IRS, which is the lead into what I'm going to tell you about. When you make ministerial approval possible for affordable projects, when you make it easier to build higher density projects and nonprofit land trusts such as ours, which would take advantage of owning land to bring down the cost of housing folks who live on it, whether they rent it or own it. Every single dollar that is donated to us from public or private sources goes further because we don't have to wait in line as long for planning. We won't have to spend as much per unit. Every single dollar will go further when it comes to a public charity such as a 501(c)(3) building homes. And that's for us. That's for nonprofit developers. That's for developers in this room. Who will be depending on those dollars to make sure every single one of them counts and to fulfill their, in our case, obligation to nonprofit operation. Or for-profit developer that we might partner with or other nonprofits in the area who are also collecting dollars from the public or private sources. Every single change that you're making will make our jobs easier, make it easier to provide more housing for the folks who need it, whether it's at the very low income level, low income, or even up to the moderate one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. So we support. The Opportunity Housing Trust supports what you're doing tonight. Thank you for putting in all the work, both the planning department, Levi. Thank you so much. And all the council members and planning commission who've put in all the work over the last couple of years to make this possible.
Mayor, council members, commissioners, Matt Huerta with the Monterey Bay Housing, sorry, Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. I'm the housing initiatives lead there. And please just reiterate a little bit of, of our. reiterate a little bit of our letter we submitted and we're in full support of the recommendations here provided by your staff. And just wanted to highlight that, you know, a lot of our recommendations, you know, center on streamlining housing as much as possible and removing constraints. So definitely in alignment there. Really that the the zoning changes for the opportunity sites to accommodate over 1,700 units is really, you know, the crux of tonight. Really, we understand that. But I think it's also important to not forget that the larger number, right? The over 3,600 units that are really the larger goal is going to require some additional flexibility and proactiveness and thoughtfulness going forward. And so I noticed as well, and I know that a lot of the fights around housing and more housing in our region center on density, aside from the infrastructure challenges that we have. And so as you're considering density, just remember that, you know, although you are, and thankfully you are increasing and trying to maximize density on these limited units, limited sites here, that there is a way to achieve more housing that's human scale, that's smaller, but more affordable homes on these sites. And that they integrate the high quality common areas and amenities. And that they be designed with sensitivity to adjacent properties. So there's a lot of things there that, that working with your high quality design teams can achieve that and in partnership with the city and other development partners. Also want to mention that, oh, one minute. And I also want to mention that the city should again, make sure that, that the every, every time that a proposal comes forward, the key question is to, to ask ourselves, yourselves is what can staff, what can the city do to help maximize those opportunities? Because they're not going to happen that often. And so when they do, make sure that, that those constraints are removed. And the realities are that, that the political landscape is changing. It will continue to change and opportunities will come and go. So as if there's a live fish there, be sure to, to make the best of it. And those of us, including Monterey Economic Partnership are here to support with additional advocacy and technical support as much as possible. Thank you for your leadership.
All right. We will take it to our one caller on Zoom.
This is Mr. Reeves. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Planning Commission. Excellent job, staff. I really enjoyed that presentation. You've heard me talk before about my concerns about the, the lack of capacity in the transportation system. And as Levi said, the EIR for the 2031 plan concluded that the impacts to Lighthouse Avenue were significant and unavoidable. And I learned through the years, that's kind of planner speak for saying it's, it's unavoidable if the project goes ahead as planned. And I know that the ship has already sailed. You can't, you're not going to change that tonight. But I just want to emphasize that this is going to be a significant impact on the transportation network for Pacific Grove and New Monterey, Lighthouse, Canary Row areas. New Monterey is conjoined with Pacific Grove. In a lot of ways, we're more like Pacific Grove than we're like Monterey because we're both on the other side of the Presidio from the rest of the, the city. So I hope that as we go through this process in the years to come, that, that watchful eye has kept on that. I hope it's not going to be some big emergency that, that all of a sudden wakes people up. Back in April of this year, we had one lane closed on Lighthouse Avenue and the whole system pretty much fell apart out here. And I'm sure that council member Barber remembers that evening because you were late coming to the council meeting. So that shows you just how fragile the system is out here. I know that a lot of this discussion around housing, the assumption is that, well, these are all going to be young, vibrant people who are going to get on their bicycles and walk to work. But frankly, I'm a skeptic. I think that a lot of these units could be occupied by people working in Salinas who decide, well, gee, now there's an abundance of housing out on the peninsula and the prices have come down. Why not live in Monterey and I'll commute to Salinas to my job instead of the other way around where, you know, a good majority of people are living in Salinas, probably because it's less expensive and commuting to, to Monterey where they work. So I just hope you keep that in mind as, as time goes by. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And there was one hand that came up right as we said, that there was only one hand. So we'll call on him. His, this is Brad. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Brad Slama. I am a real estate developer. I've been working with this council, commission and staff for the last eight years on the affordable housing overlay on Garden Road. First off, I want to take a moment to say thank you to everybody for all your efforts along the way. All these meetings are long conversations, take a long time. There's a lot of thought that goes into it. But tonight I'd like to just kind of give a real world update on the success that we're having and the impacts that these kinds of decisions are making. On Garden Road, we have 64 apartments that are going to be the first ones that are going to come online in about four or five months. Those are all apartments for rent. We also have three other projects in the pipeline that will be about 240 homes. Excuse me, 240 units for a total of 304 that are scheduled and slated to come online within the next five years. So all these decisions that we make at every level make a huge real world impact on what we're trying to accomplish here. So thank you. Levi, it was a great presentation, very thorough, very well done. The only suggestion I have for Garden Road specifically is that if we're trying to get to closer to the 60 units per acre and take advantage of the sites that we have in the best possible way, I think we should look at bumping the height from 35 feet to 45 feet by right. It is virtually impossible to develop a project at near that density without four stories. At three stories, your max is about 35 units an acre. So yeah, that's my only suggestion. Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Hey, we'll go ahead and close public comment. I think there was a few questions, particularly from Gene. And I took notes. So if you need me to reiterate at all, I can, but I
Notes as well.
On it tonight.
So if, if I, if I miss anything, I'm happy to circle back as well. I believe the first question had to do with the, the distinction between very low, low units, lower income units and how all that looks at build out of the housing element. And it's an excellent question. So actually, whenever we get those, the arena allocation given to the city at 3,654 units, they actually designate how many of those are at different affordability levels based on what they've assessed we have a shortage of. So we're actually given those numbers. So whenever we're laying out in the site where we are anticipating the development of low or very low and those numbers, we're pulling from that allocation that's been given to us. And that happens at all affordability levels. So whether that's very low, low, moderate or market rate. So, so that's kind of how that math works out. As we see properties develop, that's where we really get into that no net loss kind of conversation earlier. If we've anticipated a hundred low income units on a site, and in reality, it did not develop with 100 low income units, then that's where we have to start pointing to other areas and saying, well, we can still accommodate that based on the allowed zoning elsewhere in the city or and get into the buffer. To Gene's question, I think she, she kind of alluded to, what do we do if we start to see two more of a very low or more of any unit type at any affordability level than what we've anticipated? And that, and that's kind of in the wind and a little bit to the, to the, to the development community as they, as projects come in. We won't necessarily be dictating beyond what our inclusionary ordinance requires, which is the 20% affordability level. We, we don't, we won't be dictating to developments like how many low income units they have. So that kind of varies from development, development based on what their pro forma allows. So it is kind of a little bit of a wait and see, and it's something that can be continually monitored over the eight year period. And it's something that will be continually monitored. And then as we start to see, if we start to see trends or patterns develop, there can be additional zoning changes to be made that can further dictate those affordability levels. And that's some stuff we probably will be bringing forward with updates to our inclusionary ordinance to, and something to be thinking about whenever that happens is, do we want to prescribe more directly what the affordability requirements are from development to development? And how they can achieve that?
Well, and we have all those density bonuses to help incentivize those units that we know that we're not going to, we're going to struggle getting.
Exactly. And that's where we, with the local density bonus, we specifically targeted the moderate affordability level because that's kind of the neglected affordability level at the state level because it doesn't get you very many incentives on the, from the state density bonus. So people will usually go to that lower end. But that kind of leaves you at a deficit of moderate income units. So that's why we really wanted to target that affordability level with that. Yeah. I think she, she also had a question as it pertained to, as we start to see this demand on development and what that means for, for water systems and what it doesn't, we don't anticipate that it would dictate a certain type of water system. I don't know that the state, well, at least not HCD is, has not indicated they, they want to dictate what type of water systems or really get into that with the city. There's obviously other state agencies that are very involved with, with what, what happens with increased water usage, but we don't foresee the two to really dictate one or the other. And then there was also a question as it related to the density bonus and just a clarification or confirmation that it really is just a math problem and based on, and that sliding scale is, is it's slide, it's variable based on the unit size, the bedroom count. You know, you can get 100 units of studios in a different, very different footprint than you can get 100 two bedroom units. And the state density bonus doesn't actually make a distinction of, of that, of what the bedroom count is. It's just as density as a unit. So it really is just kind of a math problem that is adjusted based on what's being proposed. And then, yeah, I think I covered. I think that's all that I had, but.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you again. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the joint session and pass it over to the planning commission.
Thanks, Tyler. So the first thing that we're going to be getting to do is a planning commission special meeting deliberation vote on, first city council to accept the planning commission's determination that the proposed housing element implementation actions are consistent and within the scope of Monterey 2031 general plan and environmental impact report. So Commissioners Fletcher and Russfield, you, the first action is going to be on the North Fremont Special Plan.
I think the first action is on the environmental document, correct? So you all can vote on the environmental document and then the next action will be on the specific plans and, and then the rezoning. So, and we have a slide. There we go.
Okay. Any comments or discussion?
This one seems pretty easy. It's, it's really more just a sort of procedural thing. I'm, I've read it and I'm in favor of voting for it.
So shall I move?
Sure, please.
Move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution accepting the CEQA review, environmental checklist and planning office determination that implementation of housing element programs, 1B, 1C, 1L, 2A, 2F and 3C are consistent with and within the scope of the Monterey 2030 general plan EIR in accordance with CEQA article 11, section 15168.
Second.
Thank you. Clementine, can you do a roll call vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Russfield?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
And Chair Bluth?
Yes. Then we'll move on to the North Fremont specific plan.
Yeah, I think we have Commissioner Dawson and Commissioner Fletcher are going to be recusing themselves and disclosing conflicts of interest.
I think no brass.
Sorry. My mind's confused. So at this point, the commission will deliberate and take a vote on recommending approvals to the amendments to the North Fremont specific plan only.
Any discussion or questions?
I have just a few comments.
Sure.
That is, you know, this whole aspect about the, even though we just voted to approve it, this, this the unavoidable environmental impacts with the traffic, the future traffic. We're entering into a new paradigm that's not really been tested with this whole new forced upon jurisdictions of this housing element. And we're starting to see potentially a real serious problem lurking ahead if the plan becomes fully implemented. Not sure how that's going to be received in the future and putting myself 20 years from now, looking back, did we make the right decision? We're kind of forced to do this. And so it's a situation where we're handcuffed in a way, but I am concerned about people are not going to change their driving habits and ride bikes and walk and take buses and, and whatever. We're an auto centric society and it's going to be that way for some time. So it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. It's not going to change my opinion about approving this, but I just wanted to make those comments.
Thanks. So do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this one. Like I said on the other one, I have no problem with this. And I think the staff has done a great job in general of sort of making this complicated matrix of you know, the geography of the city and the various zoning and finding all these extra units and the sort of potential for them. So I, I think it was a really careful process and it's, I'm in support of it. So I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two. Recommending that the city council adopt a resolution amending land use regulations and development standards, including height, density setbacks and parking requirements in the North Fremont downtown and lighthouse specific plans.
So this will actually be a vote just on the North Fremont portion of that.
Okay.
We'll bring Mike and Dan back in for the other specific.
Great. So I amend my motion to just be the, the North Fremont specific plan.
And a second.
Second.
Thanks Clementine. Can you do a roll call for that one?
Yes. Let's see how many people are left. Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
And Chair Bluth?
Yes. Thank you. And then we can get Dan and Mike back.
We didn't hear. Back from exile.
And then now we'll be taking a vote on the, the remaining specific plans. So the amendments to the downtown and the lighthouse specific.
Right. And Mike is not well, so he's not here today. So.
Correct. So no, no recusal necessary when we get to that point.
Great. Any discussion on the rest of the plan?
What is?
I mean, other than our North Fremont.
Can we repeat the?
Yeah, just down on specific plan. Yeah.
Correct. These are amendments to the development standards to the downtown specific plan and the lighthouse specific plan.
Okay. So the resolution actually reads as inclusive of all, just like you read it before. But we did the North Fremont first. And so now it is all of them or just lighthouse and downtown.
Just lighthouse and downtown because of conflicts. So the rest of the planning commission can vote on these two.
A move that the city council, a move that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt a resolution amending land use regulations and development standards, including height, density, setbacks and parking requirements in the downtown and lighthouse specific plans.
Second.
Thanks. Can we do a roll call, Clementine?
Commissioner Russfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher? Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Vice Chair. Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
And Chair Bluth.
Yes.
And now I believe everyone will be able to participate in the remaining deliberation and votes on both the rezoning amendment to changes to chapter 38 and then also the density bonus ordinance.
Any discussion?
I think we got it.
Yep. Right. Motion?
Who wants to take this one?
Does it seem like that's the motion for this?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to dissect this real quick.
Yeah. And there's the other one.
So this would be the MF2 residential overlay zone as well as MF1 and MF3.
Yeah. Levi, could you put that slide back on? I should add the. See, originally, we're going to have Mike, Mike Dawson was going to have to recuse and we would have to do this in separate votes, but now we can do it all in one. So as Nat mentioned, this will be to to recommend the city council adopt the ordinance to make the amendments to the multifamily residential overlay. Rezone properties to be included in the multifamily residential overlay, included in the regional housing needs assessment overlay and rezone properties at 1200 Aguahito Road and amend the architectural review procedure.
So this is resolution three.
It's it's part of. And you can make a motion as to what I just read as well, if you'd like.
We accept as explained by Levi.
I'll second that.
Great.
They did a good job.
Clementine, can you do a roll call then?
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
And Chair Bluth.
Yes.
And then the final resolution will be recommending adopting a recommendation to the city council adopt an ordinance with the density bonus amendments and provisions of the local density bonus.
Any discussion? A motion? That's the first.
I'll do the motion that we adopt the ordinance amending the density bonus to comply with state housing law and to establish a local density bonus incentive for qualifying housing projects.
I'll second that.
Great. Clementine, can you do another roll call for us?
Yes, just I'm sorry. I didn't see who was the second or I heard the voice, but I don't know your voices. Thank you. Okay. And Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
And Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I believe we can adjourn from the planning commission special meeting and reconvene to the city council regular meeting.
Okay, so thank you, planning commission for your thoughtful deliberation and swift deliberation. We'll push it back to staff for a brief presentation recap of the planning commission special meeting. Yes, sir.
Any big comments? I've held my comments earlier.
Um, please, yeah, but why don't you go ahead and do so?
I'll go ahead and start then.
I think he meant to do it before they adjourned, so.
Sorry.
I I'm assuming that you meant to do this before you adjourned from the planning commission.
I did. I
Okay.
Assume that we were going to do this.
We, we have another, I believe Chrissy had put in the procedures, so they would go back to if there is additional questions for staff based on the recommendations and there's another public comment period if we want to.
But normally if the end of the department, we have commissioners comments. That's what I was thought we were going to do.
Is it related to what we, what you just approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, there. Hi, it's Christine Davy appearing remotely. There's not a space on the agenda tonight for planning commissioner general comments like you typically have in your regular meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Chrissy, for the clarification. All right. We'll go ahead back to the adjournment of the planning commission in.
A point of order, Mr. Mayor. Just before Mr. Brassfield leaves, I think you will have an opportunity during a public comment is kind of what I heard if you want to speak then. So.
We'll get there.
That's correct.
We have a, the next procedures listed here where there will be questions of staff and then open public comment on planning commission recommendations. And that's when Commissioner Brassfield can have three minutes to to comment. Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Pass back to Levi for the brief presentation.
Yeah, so I don't really have much more to add beyond the presentations already been provided. I'm happy to answer any questions that were that originated from the recommendations or the conversation from the planning commission, but no additional presentation at this time.
Cuts number half is a question here.
Yeah, I have a few questions that were kind of raised by the public that in my mind, I'm still sort of thinking over. One question related to the garden road height limit of, I think, 35 feet. Brad Slama suggested, could that be 45 feet? Because 35 feet essentially makes it impossible to meet the increased density limit. What would be the reason not to do that? There's not a lot of other properties there that would be impacted by an increase in the height limit. It seems like a reasonable suggestion. So what's staff's response to that request?
Yeah, it does seem like a reasonable approach. I think our, where we came, we're coming from was trying to in that specific area, as we've seen developments already start to come through along garden road, maintaining the height restriction or height limit that's there today. We definitely, obviously, staff wants to put in place development standards that will facilitate that density that we're we're going to be allowing. So staff would be open to increased height limits, which is not something we were necessarily proposing with the initial.
So Levi, if the council, after deliberating, decided we wanted to amend the recommendation tonight, is that something we could do as part of our approval?
That is.
And then the second thing had to do with Gene Rash's comment about the local density bonus and I guess I'm a little confused because it's in my experience historically, when it comes to affordable housing, what we tend to see a lot of are moderate, moderate units. We don't see very many very low income, in particular extremely low income. So it also occurs to me, and I could be wrong, but in a normal housing environment where market conditions were not constrained by things like water and overregulation and things like that, that in a normal market, the market would meet the demand for moderate housing. So I guess I'm wondering, could we, and you know, what would sort of be staff's response in in? I understand the desire for two and three bedroom units that we want to be able to house families, for example, as part of that density bonus, but could we instead be requiring extremely low income and low income? A very low income as opposed to moderate? Just kind of walk me through that again, because again, in my experience, when it comes to affordable units, we tend to be much more successful and developers, they're always ready to throw in a moderate unit. When it comes to very low income, twist my arm. So speak to that, please.
Sure. No, that's excellent point. And yeah, to what you're pointing out is is kind of the the moderate affordability level allows for a developer to get as close to market rate as they can get, but still call it an affordable unit. So you're right, there is a financial incentive in a way for a developer to push moderate affordable levels where we're, where we see a gap there pertains to the incentives and the concessions and waivers associated with density bonus law in which that sliding scale gives you a lot more flexibility, a lot higher density bonus if you do the very low and low income. So we've started to see a trend with projects that utilize state density bonus to really hone in on those, that very low end to take the biggest advantage of the incentives and the added density. And then they take the added density and they make those market rate.
So Levi, your expectation is then that we will start to see more extremely and very low income units being built because of the other bonuses that are available.
Correct.
Whereas the moderate is sort of left out.
That's correct.
Okay.
And we're hoping to kind of make up that gap with that local provision that says if you do opt to do a certain percentage of moderate on top of what you're doing for the state density bonus, you can kick in a little bit more.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Yeah.
Okay, two quick questions. What is the possibility for for the city to obtain a pro housing status with the state? I know that's something a lot of jurisdictions have been doing. How does that align with what's currently proposed in the programs outlined in our housing element?
Yes, so that's something that the city is working towards right now, actually. So it's in tandem with implementing our housing, which is a, it's it's a part of the requirement to get that designation and maintain that designation is to implement the provisions of your housing element. So we're actually working on that in tandem with this initiative as well.
Awesome. And then second question, congregational overlay. I know that we're, there were some work towards that. I'm just kind of wondering what does that work program look like moving forward?
Sure. So that's was adopted as a program in the housing action plan and it will be coming forward. It's not been fully developed yet. We still want to do a lot more coordination with our, our religious properties so that we can have a better idea of how we need to build out that program. But it is a program slated to come forward in the eight-year planning period.
Okay. And 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 just to to put it out there, and I know staff knows this, but you know, there's organizations like COPA Community, I don't know actually what it stands for, community, something program. It's religious organizations within the community that are really focused on certain specific issues like housing. And there, they have really great relationships with religious organizations in Santa Cruz County that have actually moved forward with congregational overlays and they want to help work with the, with the churches in in Monterey to help take advantage of those opportunities and and really show them how it can be a win-win situation for the local jurisdiction along with the with the church. So I'm really excited to see that being fully implemented. Those are all my questions for now. So with that, we'll go ahead and go back to public comment from the planning commission's recommendations. So any, but let me start for folks on Zoom. I'm going to ask for you to use the raise hand function. So go ahead and use that now. I'm going to come back to you to do the countdown so that you have some time to to raise your hand. And then in the meantime, I'm going to go back to the chamber. If you wish to speak on public comment, I'd ask you to either stand up to the left of the podium or identify yourself by raising your hand. So I see one hand raised. Is there anybody else in the chamber that wishes to speak on this item? All right. So I'll go back to Zoom and I'll do this final countdown to five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody on Zoom. Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and go to our one public speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This has been an interesting process. I wanted to compliment Levi, not just for tonight, but keeping us on track during the discussions led up to this. Trying to meet the deadline, the state's deadlines. Both Kim before Levi and Levi have done a great job of keeping us on track for these kind of dates. And I see it in the discussions I have with the public. I have a lot of people that last couple of weeks were a little unhappy with this process. They don't like what the state's doing, but I told them there's nothing we can do about that. And when it comes down to one of the, I was reminded that in any kind of process like this, it's regulation, taxation and fees and then subsidies. And we're all dealing with those kind of things. The very low income people that we have here typically are the workers that do our tourist industry. So we have to support them. But somewhere along the line, there's another group that we have to ask, can you afford to live here? Because I'm running into that because I had a young woman recently said that she's going to be forced to move because she can't afford to live here. I said, I, I went through that 50 years ago. Could I afford to live here? And I had a hard time first at first. So those are the realities that we have to deal with. One of the things that we came up with in the discussions with the public is that they were, they were very concerned, particularly on the Bruce Lane issue. Because when we went through the specific plan, that was a very sensitive area identified in the plan. And pretty well got people acknowledging that we have to go to at least four stories. So those are the kind of things that I think that the public needs to acknowledge as well as the people in this position, in these positions. Because we're, we're trying to deal with the best information we can to deal with the best solution we can, given our circumstances. And I, I wanted to compliment the commission too, because it, it's been an awful lot of time dealing with these nuances and I'm very pleased to hear that Levi is answering all the questions tonight because it is a very tumultuous topic in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back. I had a helpline, just for the record, COPA is Communities Organized for Relation. Way to go, Gabe. Sorry. Communities Organized for Relational Power in Action. So that's what COPA stands for. All right. So we've closed public comment. Is it possible, I'm going to ask this to Chrissy, is it possible for us to combine our vote on all these? Or do we have to do them separately? Since there's nobody that has to recuse themselves from any of these.
Sorry, I'm trying to turn my video on. Doesn't seem to want to cooperate. They are different items, so I would ask that each one have a separate vote.
Okay, so the first item.
Mayor, please. I think there was comments that the council might have wanted to make. So it might be easier if we did our comments and then we went to the vote.
How about we allow, because we're allowing deliberation on each of the items? So if you're, so I would just try to find the item that is tied to the comments you want to make. And so when we're deliberating that, you can make the comments during that item.
Okay, well, that works.
So the first item is adopt a resolution to accept the planning office determination that the proposed housing element implementation actions are consistent with and within the scope of Monterey 2031 general plan environmental impact report in accordance with the CEQA article 11, section 1516A, resolution number one. So entertain a motion or deliberation. This is the, this is the EIR.
No, I want to wait.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
A second.
All right. So moving to second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to this next item is to amend the land use regulations and development standards including height, density setbacks and parking requirements in the North Fremont downtown and lighthouse specific plans, resolution number two. Entertain a motion or deliberation.
So just to clarify, this, this does not include the garden road. That'll be a separate. Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
This is where I'm going to.
Perfect. Yeah, absolutely.
And it probably applies to to all of this. So my, my, my perspective, I just wanted to point out the city Monterey currently manages maintains 550 units of inclusionary housing. So I'm not telling you all anything you don't know, but I wanted to remind some in the audience that have continued to advocate for additional housing. And there's some comments as if the city Monterey is not working hard enough. And I take exception to that. Because the history of this city council and policy and the city government has been continually to look for housing opportunities. And specifically for inclusionary housing units that we manage 550 and those did not just get built in the last couple of years, but every year we are adding to those units and always looking for more opportunities. Just like we are waiting to start construction behind us for 42 inclusionary housing units to be built by mid pin. The cost of building close to the coast in California, you all know this, it's very expensive. Very difficult and especially difficult when we are trying to encourage more inclusionary housing. And when you put that against the state's intrusion, and I'm going to call it an intrusion, and overregulation demanding through the AMBAG process, 3,654 units compared to the last cycle where we were tasked with, I think it was 600 units. How in the world did we get here? With the state demanding and changing the rules. That's how we got here. And we are not the only city that is going to struggle with getting anywhere close to those units. And by my comments, I'm not meaning to be taken for anti-build, anti-housing. That's not it at all. But I want the advocates that are advocating for housing to understand the hardships that everyone has when we are approaching anything in terms of building. Density, water and state overreach are issues. They're legitimate issues. But when we put that against profitability. interest rates, availability of water, the motivation of builders to be able to make the numbers work. We heard from a builder tonight who called in, who is saying he can't do it for three story, really needs four story. Well, those are real issues. And I agree. I think we need to talk about that. We need to bring that back and face that policy. It's not that easy to just say, well, let's just build inclusionary housing and let's tell the builders they have to do that. And you have to do that in an environment where I think the interest rates I'm hearing is like six and a quarter. If you're buying an R1, three bedroom, two baths with 20% down. It's no better in the building environment. So we hear a lot of folks talk about build, 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 do this, do that. The interest rate, water and this housing element are automatic constraints. To do more low interest, or I'm sorry, low and very low housing units increases the inability for the builder to actually build. Every builder we have had come before this council in the time I've been here has always pointed it out. We've had plans that came forward and we authorized it and we said yes, and we got the 20%. In one case, a little bit more, and they walked away because the numbers don't work. So the dilemmas are the more low income inclusionary housings that are demanded, the less you're going to see built. And every developer I have talked to in the 10 years I've been on the council has said that. And how many units have we seen built in the 10 years? That Alan and I have been on the council together. Very, very few. So when you talk about inclusionary housing, what you're really saying is that it's a subsidized unit that the state or city government has to help build with dollars. So unless we're willing to shift our priorities and add our money to those projects or give our land to do that, we're not going to see great numbers built. And in eight years, we're not going to see anywhere close to 3,654 units. Now, I hope Brad is successful in Garden Road. I support those projects. If it's 300 units in the next, and he said 300 units in the next five years. If we got 1,000 units in eight years, that would be a glorious success. So don't delude yourself in thinking we're going to get 3,654 units in eight years. It is just not going to happen unless the interest rate drops to two and a half and we suddenly have more water. And then the builders are going to build. So that's my blink of observation of the housing. Now, the flip side of that is we're complying with the state. That's a good thing. Our staff met all the deadlines and has presented us a complete list of packages and amendments that comply with the state. And I fully support it. But there's a lot of constraints in here that make it even more difficult to achieve housing units. But we have to comply with the state. So again, we have an overreach from the state of California that does actually complicate this. Now, Peter Silva, I wished he was here. He was spot on in his comments. He made the comment that there's a lot of government regulation. I would really like to see the state of California back up their regulation and their requirements with more money. If they can start coming in with some more money, we can start partnering with some building partners and we can actually see some achievable goals. But I fully support housing whenever, wherever, where we don't offend the neighbors, where it's the right size and not overdensified. And these new regulations are going to pretty much bring a lot of density. And I hope we get water soon. But what water we get, there was an article in the Carmel Pine Cone last week that perfectly laid out the dilemma that's coming. We may get a little bit of water, but we don't have a lot of water coming anytime soon. But I support all phases of all projects to be able to get it, the point where we do have water. So we can have buildable lots that we currently have that are not built and properties that we saw tonight in the housing element that talked about vacant buildings that are probably sitting there waiting for water. So we have some dilemmas. We have the housing element, the appropriate amendments ready. We've increased density all over the town. And so if we get water and we get motivated builders and we get a little bit lower interest rate, we might see some of these units come forward. But I'm not anti-building. I just want to point out the dilemma. So I don't want to see people say the city Monterey is not doing enough. The city Monterey has done more than most cities on the peninsula to accommodate the inclusionary housing units that we manage, that are full, and we provide housing. And we have a few selected properties where we can squeeze in a few more if we get water and a better interest rate and motivated builders. And did you notice we didn't have any builders here tonight? You would think, well, Bob, I'm sorry.
Brad.
I'll, I'll point you out. And Brad called in. If this was a hot topic and we had lots of builders ready, I think we would have seen him here. I hope they were watching. This is a complicated process. But the city Monterey does not have a housing department that has carpenters, construction, trucks or building material. The private sector is the driver to solve this problem. So with that, I'll stop talking. I'm positive about getting this done. I'm really excited to see that the staff was able to meet this arduous journey with these tight deadlines. And kudos to all the staff in planning and public works and the contractors that we use. Levi, you did an outstanding job. And my criticism is not pointed at staff. Excellent job, excellent work under Kim's leadership for the Department of Planning. And thank you for city council listening to me because I've complained about the state before and have complained about the AMBAG process. And thank you for relieving me of that duty a year and a half ago, Alan. But believe me, it was frustrating. And kudos to you to be able to do that now. But I'm excited to be able to push this over the line and then let it be there so that everyone knows the rules. Private sector and the state knows that we are following the rules and the guidelines. And we are not an inhibiting, an inhibiting factor to not allowing projects to come forward and be built. And I stand forward to support any of the projects that can be built within the rules and the guidelines where they can find water and put some people in housing. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Any otherbody else?
Yeah, it seems like a good time to maybe share some of my thoughts and comments on the whole kind of process. First of all, I want to echo what Councilman Ed said at the beginning, which is expressing our appreciation to our, our staff and our Planning Commission, and honestly, our whole community for the support and the work that everyone has offered to bring this plan together. We faced a significant challenge. We had a very short timeline. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe we had more units to plan for than any other jurisdiction in the county. I know we had more than the county. And we're the oldest city, I believe, we're more or less a built out city. And so for us to plan for 3,600 units was really quite a challenge. And I just really want to express my gratitude for the hard work that has gone into this plan. I also really think the point Councilman Ed made about the fact that the city of Monterey for decades really has been committed to affordable housing. And we have, again, the last time I checked, we had more affordable deed restricted affordable units than any other city on the peninsula. And we have a pretty aggressive inclusionary ordinance. Now that's where I do maybe beg to differ a bit, or I have a different perspective. You know, I believe our inclusionary ordinance works. There are challenges. We have water challenges that have inhibited development. We have other challenges. We've had some regulations that made it difficult. But if you allow a developer enough density and enough height, in other words, the ability to put in enough units, they can cover the cost of those inclusionary or affordable units. So I believe our inclusion, if we didn't have our inclusionary ordinance, we would have very few affordable units in the city of Monterey. And I believe we're going to have more in the future because of it. I also just wanted to kind of speak to the comment about transportation challenges and no doubt 3,600 units, that could be, that could be 10,000 people potentially, or a city of 30,000. So if you're adding 25% to the population, there's no doubt that our traffic corridors are going to be impacted. But here's where I, again, maybe beg to differ a bit with Commissioner Silva, which is he said that it's never going to change. People are never going to change. We are a car centric society. Well, here on this council, we have at least two council members who bicycle to work and to other events quite frequently. And that could change if we were actually, as a community, committed to making a complete and safe bicycle infrastructure. We don't have that now. It's quite honestly, it's not safe. There are a lot of times I'm biking and I don't feel safe. But I do it because of various other reasons. People, with the invention of like e-bikes, you don't need to be 20 years old and like a fitness buff. I'm 60 years old and out of shape and I can bicycle to Marina and back. So it's a choice. It really is. And we live in a beautiful, you know, weather community. It very rarely rains. It never snows. So it's a choice. But the problem is that choice is limited by our infrastructure. So we invest heavily in our car centric society. Ergo, we have car centric people. I mean, that just stands to reason. So if we were actually committed to building a safe bicycle infrastructure, I guarantee you things would change because there's no reason they couldn't. We also have, I'm sorry to say, a not very effective transit system. It doesn't really work for the vast majority of Monterey residents. It's gotten worse since some of the changes MST made. But again, as we have more density, there will be greater demand for services for transit. And hopefully MST will respond. So I don't think that this is one of those kind of inevitable things that, oh God, it could never change. It can change. We make choices that dictate the kind of transportation challenges we have. So I just, I won't be here for some of those decisions. It'll be a new council. But I just hope you kind of bear that in mind as you think about some of the decisions with respect to transportation and infrastructure. So it doesn't have to be this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa. Please.
I wanted to share also a comment about, very similar to what Councilmember Hoffa just shared in terms of the infrastructure. I was driving through CSU MB with my daughter the other day. And we're driving past all the, the new housing there and we, we went past the Trader Joe's and, and the Target, the shopping area, all that. And without saying anything, my daughter turns to me and says, hey, if I come to school here, I don't have to drive anywhere. So that to me, that moment it clicked that she understood what the value is of, of creating that kind of environment. Not only for the students, right, but for the population that lives there. And, and that's something that we could create here as well. Now, I'm not saying necessarily go with, with the model that, that Marina has, has gone with. I mean, they're doing their thing and it's great what they're doing. Monterey is a different city with different needs, right? But I think there's opportunity for planning along those lines where our residents can work, go to school and shop where they live. So and I think this is, is a first step or one of the first steps towards that. In listening to the comments earlier, you know, I think that there's, yeah, there's, folks are not going to change just with one simple step that we're taking. It requires shifts in the various things that, that we have and that we plan for in order to accommodate that change so that the change could be more maybe easy or somewhat incentivized for, you know, our residents to, to be more comfortable in making that shift. So I'm happy to see this and I'm happy to see how the conversation is going towards really just addressing all those various items so that we can move into a community that's a little bit more livable. And that's it. Thanks.
So a couple of thoughts. The state, I, I think it's, we have to be careful in regards to attacking the state. I mean, yes, the state did impose this. And it's hard for the state to create policy that addresses the needs of each individual jurisdiction. I believe in having local control, but when jurisdictions continue to fail over time to implement the policies that are needed to address the, the most challenging issues in our state. What do we expect the state to do? The state has to, to take some, some action. So the state didn't do this in a vacuum. Something led to, to where we are today. And, and so it's, what I'm gathering from this conversation is it's a balanced approach. This isn't to say that we're, I don't think anybody is knocking the city of Monterey for the efforts that we've made historically. In fact, just to add to what makes Monterey great in regards to this conversation, we're the most dense city in the entire county. There's already a lot of density here. But when we look at why there's been a disproportionate higher number given to the city of Monterey in the Raina allocation is because our exponential increase in job growth without keeping pace with housing construction. So if we're going to incentivize more jobs being here, we have to think about where are we going to allow these people to live? And it gets to this public transit and transportation conversation. What we do locally is all about where do people live, where do people work, and how do they get to and from those places? And it's kind of watering it down a little bit. It's also getting to the local shopping center and getting to the childcare facility and, you know, the recreation department. But we have to think about what do we have people doing in their lives, where they live and where they work. And so it's incumbent upon all of us to create the opportunity for people to live closer to where they work. And we happen to have a lot of low income jobs in our community. I don't see that going away anytime soon. And so I fully embrace this 3,654 units that is imposed on us through the housing allocation process. And I would go a step further and say, I feel confident in our city's ability to be actually able to achieve that. Clearly some feel otherwise, but we have to champion this because the most vulnerable people in our community are what's at stake. And, and so if we think about this as an afterthought and just checking a box, then we're failing the most vulnerable people in our community and failing ourselves. Because we depend on those individuals to support the industries and work in the industries that support all the wonderful services that we have here in the city of Monterey. We have to take care of our community and in the end we'll all benefit from it. And if we look at this in a vacuum and, or, or as things are today and what we're comfortable with, we're failing to see where the opportunities are. So to Councilmember Hoffa's point, by creating a city of the future. So to Councilmember Hoffa's point, by creating a city of the future, creating options where people can live closer to where they work and thinking about how we get people to and from their, these various locations, we're going to help reduce traffic impact. We're going to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We're going to increase people's quality of life and we're all going to benefit from it. I think the story that I share quite often is imagine you going down to the local coffee shop and the barista that's serving you your coffee is your next door neighbor. You can check in on one another because they're part of your community. That's what this is all about. In, in regards to the cost of building, that is absolutely a barrier. And there, there's a lot of challenges associated with this conversation. That's why we're here having this conversation today. That's why every single jurisdiction in the state of California is, is required to do this. One of the things that I, I think we need to do is express some greater advocacy with our state legislatures. Because a lot of the grant funding opportunities that exist today are provided for low income communities. And to the point that you're making, Councilmember Smith, we're, we're oftentimes not identified as a low income community. But the high cost of housing, it's more expensive to build housing here than it is in Salinas. So why are we getting shorthanded when we're trying to actually unload some of that burden from Salinas where our workforce currently lives and allow them to live here? If we can get that support in helping to, to meet that delta in regards to particularly around those affordable units, I think we'll all be the better for it. So this definitely is going to take a lot of partnership. We need to work with, with all stakeholders. I, I'm excited for this and I think this is a first step. I'm going to say this at the end too, but I'm going to say it now as a, as a close out to my comment here. And, and, and I've shared this with staff before, but we need to continue to be flexible and nimble. And I think Matt Werthus spoke about this during his comments. We need to be flexible and nimble based off of the needs of our developers. Is this to say that we're going to let them do anything they want to do? No, but if we have a reasonable project that's being proposed, and I look forward to getting to this discussion around a garden road. If Brad Slama needs another ten feet and, and it seems somewhat reasonable for us to do so, let's do what we need to do to make the changes, even if they're outside of the programs that are established in, in our housing element so that we can get those units developed. We need to get the job done and, and get, and get these houses constructed. So for those reasons, I will be supporting the motion. Any other deliberation?
Make it, I'll make a comment and then I'll make a motion.
The motion, motion's already made.
Who made the?
I thought it was you that made the motion.
I can't remember.
But I seconded it.
Oh, it was you.
See what happens at nine o'clock at night? I forgot. Yes.
True worst said.
Yes. Oh, yes, we have. Worst being, you know, the, the frustration I have. And, and, and I don't disagree with the comments, Mayor. My problem with the Ambag process driven by the state was the numbers, that the, the procedures, the change, radical, radical change statewide. And we're not the only city. Well, maybe you're not barking. I'm barking. A lot of other cities have been barking about the math. That was the equation that leads to tell us that we have supposedly forty thousand jobs in the city of Monterey. That skewed the math that delivers a high number in Rena. We didn't do anything wrong in the previous cycles. Matter of fact, we were fifty percent in achievement of the last cycle. More than any other city except for Salinas, where we achieved fifty percent of our Rena number the last cycle. So I don't want to make this about a scorecard, but we didn't do any wrong. The math in this process told us, faced us with a complex set of numbers from the state of California. It had absolutely no wiggle room. And as a matter of fact, the report that was delivered to the state from Ambag would not allow us to point out a significant problem the peninsula agencies have, which is we are in a cease and desist. They would not even entertain the conversation in the Rena process. So it's a system that's broken. I hope with state advocacy, we can change it for the next cycle. I think the representative government that we have, we need to advocate to make sure that they understand our plight. And as far as I know right now, and I forgot to ask Levi, there is no known penalty on the city, cities or counties if they fail to meet their Rena number in eight years. I don't think there's a single penalty. Now, we may not acquire grants from state money, but right now there's no penalty that the city will suffer from failing to meet thirty six fifty four. However, I hope we can achieve many more than we have now and closer to thirty six fifty four. So I support the motion, obviously because I made it. What says the clerk? No other comments?
I, I, I would just say that it, it's good. It's good that we recognize our successes and that we did better than any other jurisdiction in, in the county other than Salinas. I, I would, I would just say on the other side of that conversation is we didn't meet our goal. And, and so what happens is that, that number that's established is giving us an estimate of how many units that we need to develop over that decade period of time. So now that's just adding up to the pent up demand for housing construction that's needed in our region. So is this not to say that the city of Monterey isn't on the right track? We're doing the right thing, moving in a good direction. It just helps to emphasize the work that we still have ahead for ourselves.
Yeah, I'm just kind of a practical, practical guy. I'm, I'm looking at it being practical.
Yep.
And, but that doesn't mean I want to put any stops to opportunities. So.
Absolutely. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and do, uh, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the next one. Recommend to the city council to amend the land use regulation. Oh no, sorry, reading the wrong side of the document. Amend the zoning ordinance to add a regional housing needs assessment overlay district, amending the multifamily overlay district land use regulations and development standards, rezone properties to be included in the multifamily residential and RH, RHNAOD, rezone twelve hundred Aguahito Road and amend architecture review procedures. And this is ordinance number one, and this is the item.
So I would make a motion to approve, but I would like to amend it to increase the height limit on garden, in the garden, the developmental part of Garden Road to forty five feet from thirty five feet. And my understanding from staff is that is some, a permissible action if the council supports it.
Second, moved and seconded discussion.
Yeah. Alan, the fear I have of approving it outright is without having a staff assessment of what, what would it look like? And does it infringe on scenic highway sixty eight? Does it impact? And I don't think there's any airport conversation there, but, but you know, what is the overall impact of that? And I wouldn't entertain it, but I'm concerned with just doing it without a staff report.
Well, the reason I'd like to, to, to move this forward now is that we have a developer who is hot to trot, who's doing things. And I, what I would hate to see is, you know, we drag our feet. He's moving forward because, you know, for him, it's the right time to move forward. And then we lose that opportunity for, you know, forever possibly. And so I, I, I think I would, I still think I would like to move forward with this. I do understand your concern, but I don't, I, I don't really, I'm, I'm trying to imagine what the impacts would be. I, I don't think that there are any significant impacts.
Mayor, can I ask staff a question on this since it's having to do with the housing element?
Please.
So Kim Levi, could, could I ask the question in terms of your assessment of, you know, the topography, you know, the area, and you've also worked with the applicant? Just like to know, if we tasked you to come back and you reported, what would you report to us with thirty seconds of preparation? Without having to go all the way and come back in a month.
In fairness, I had a feeling we were going to come back to this, so I had more than thirty seconds.
For the record.
Perfect.
Yeah. Honest Abe over here.
Yeah. The, yeah, so staff's not overly concerned with adjusting that height. We really were kind of out of abundance of caution, just trying to maintain as many of the development standards that existed there today. Moving it to forty five feet would be in line with the heights that we're proposing in the Pacific Monarch Cass overlay. And also consistent with the, the MF three, the courthouse site as well. So forty five feet would actually be consistent across the multifamily overlay, all three zones. So that doesn't really present much of a concern to us. As far as it relates to impacts to the scenic highway, we have specific setback requirements already built into the development standards for both the courthouse site as it pertains to highway one. And then also the garden road zone that pertains to the scenic highway of, of sixty eight there in that portion. So we have development standards that I think are, would adequately address any, any potential impacts to the scenic resources. And as it relates to the airport safety zones, they don't actually extend to that side of Garden Road. So we don't think the heights would propose any issues with that at forty five feet. I think there is just one thing I will note, as we've talked a lot about density bonus and the ability to get concessions or waivers to development standards. Height is, is one of those that qualifies under density bonus. So while the height limit is, you know, proposed at thirty five feet or as amended, possibly forty five feet, there's still that potential for developers when they meet that, the affordability requirements to choose a development standard that they can not comply with. And height would be one of those. So just something to keep in mind. I think it is forty five does still seem like a, a, a reasonable increase in height, even with that in mind. But just wanted the council to be aware of that before they act.
Thank you. Good staff work.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we'll go on to the last item, which is to amend chapter thirty eight, section thirty eight dash one twelve point five density bonus to comply with state housing law and establish local development incentives for qualifying housing projects, which is ordinance number two. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And that is it. We made it through. Kudos again to, to staff. Seriously, lots of appreciation for you all. You guys do a stellar job. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. All righty. And with that, we'll go ahead to council comments.
I'm going to pass. You heard from me enough.
Please.
So I really don't have a council comment except for thank you for all the hard work for everybody. All the hard nights, long nights, hard work and everything that you do every time, just not only now, but things that we don't even hear about and see. Because it takes a lot when you're dealing with planning and zoning and building and changes and state and local. And I mean, it's just so many different components. And to keep up with all of that and still be in compliance and still be ahead of the ball game, because you are already. Just, it just is fascinating and just want to basically applaud you again and say thank you.
All righty. City manager reports.
Yes. So last week, Monday, we had a rupture of a water main. I just wanted to explain briefly what happened. The rupture was pretty significant. It was, I think, twelve or fourteen feet below the surface and affected a twenty feet length water main of sixteen inch. What made the repair more intense was that across that water line ran a city sewer main as well. So in order to get to the side and replace a twenty foot pipe, we had to also, or Calum had also to remove the sewer pipe. And you cannot just remove the sewer pipe because it connected to Alta Mesa. And they would have had some challenges there. So there was quite a, a system to put in place to have trucks there to pump the sewage then and, and ensure that there is no interruption of, of service level. So what made it harder also was at the same time that when they dug the hole for the water main, that parallel running AT&amp;T conduit, partial portions of that conduit fell into that hole. And they had to coordinate not only with AT&amp;T then, but also with Monterey One Water and with the city. And very close by is ran also pressurized natural gas PG&E main line. So all in all, the, the incident, I think, happened Monday at around ten, ten thirty a morning. And twenty four seven work by Calum and the subcontractor ended at about Wednesday at eight PM. The other part is we, we spoke about measure P and measure S. That part of the road had been just very recently completely reconstructed. So of course Calum was put on notice pass as well to, to replace that section completely. And have, we have been in, in a good collaboration with PG, with, with Calum on this one. Switching gears to another utility PG&E, we had some power outages. I remember in September on a Sunday and then two days later on a Tuesday, large power outage in downtown Monterey. With, with really no clear explanation by PG&E what happened. Literally thousands of people were affected who were frequenting our conference center, who were also enjoying downtown at that time. We, we submitted a claim to PG&E for around ninety two thousand dollars of damages that happened to, to the conference center, as well as to staff work involved. And we'll see how this mighty utility will respond to us and if they are actually capable of, of tracking that claim. The elections have been certified today and Councilmember-elect Gene Rash is, is in the audience. So congratulations. Tree lighting will be on Friday. And then also congratulations to Councilmember Garcia and to Mayor Williamson. Tree lighting will be happening on Friday at five PM. And I hope to see you all there for a beautiful ceremony again in front of Colton Hall. Thank you.
Was snow predicted because Alan needed to know?
Does anybody know the day, the last time it snowed in Monterey?
It was in the eighties because I drove in the snow to church and I had a three year old.
Wow.
Prior to that.
Wow. So we're, we're, we're kind of due for one, it sounds like then. Hey, it may happen. We have a lot of angry faces right now. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everybody.